The End of the World is the end of the human race. 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 The end of the human race.[288.32]
So first, we'd like to stand and have a moment of silence and a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Board, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. We have an agenda, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, the Board. Tonight, we want to start with a recognition for the GLAD Clorox Company. And we have a resolution that we want to use to recognize them. This will require the Board's signature. But I'd like to read the resolution, a little bit of background on it. The GLAD opened here in Amherst County in 1991. The factory opened in 1991. It's been a partner with Amherst County Public Schools since they were opened. They've done multiple things. I remember when I was coaching football in the state championship in 1995, and they were calling for some snow. They ended up producing enough plastic to make a tarp to cover the football field so we wouldn't have to worry about the snow on the field. So that goes back to then. But since then, they've given us funding through the Education Foundation and through the school system and provide it for our schools, whether it be GLAD bags, trash bags, Ziploc bags, et cetera, for our schools. They've just been a great partner for us. They were going to be here this evening, but the representative could not attend tonight. But we'll be at the Education Foundation luncheon tomorrow, and we'll present this with them there. Is he here? I'm sorry. So we do have someone here tonight, all right? So I'm just gonna, I'll come up there and read it, and then we can present it. And we have a, we'll have a hard stop version of this. All right. So it says, "Whereas, public schools and local businesses are an integral part of this community, and whereas many local businesses play a crucial role in supporting our schools, and whereas the economic health of our communities, state, and nation depends on a strong public school system, and whereas collaboration between local public schools and local business strengthens schools and the business community alike by providing a well-trained and highly educated workforce, and whereas an excellent public school system is vital to the quality of life in this community and fundamental to preserving a strong society now and in the future, therefore, now therefore be resolved that Superintendent William Wells and the School Board of Amherst County, Virginia, names GLAD Clorox to the 2023 Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Role, showing appreciation for the company's ongoing support of this community school division. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for every child, every day. Adopted ninth day of March, 2023."
Back to her assigned chairs now.
So moving to 3.01.
Yes, sir. So 3.01 is a public hearing concerning the 2324 school operational budget. Again, comments here should just be in regard to our school operation budget, and there'll be another opportunity for public comment after a public hearing is disclosed.
Any comment?
So you'll need to have a motion to open the public comment. Go moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from this, yeah?
Yeah, is there anyone here who would like to speak to the proposed budget? I see none. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing on this operational budget.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None. Okay.
And now you have 4.01, public comment concerning school matters.
Okay. So we have several people who've signed up tonight. First is Rachel Martin. Okay. William Wiegert. Sorry about that.
Good evening, and thank you, Board. We hire armed police officers to protect students physically. I suggest we need to be equally concerned about protecting them psychologically and emotionally. Just yesterday, the governor of Florida, interestingly enough, outed books found in his school library so graphic that Twitter and Facebook had to restrict the content. We don't want that in Amherst County, of course, and I believe the opt-in policy helps ensure that it does not. I don't see any place for sexually explicit material in government schools, but it seems today you can't go a day without learning about drag queen story time, pornography in the library, teachers undermining family authority in matters of psychological and sexual development of children, encouraging questions of gender identity, or feminizing young men. I can't know if it's going on in Amherst County, but I'm sure the pressure is coming if it's not already here, which is why I'm strongly in favor of the safeguards to make sure that it doesn't, and I believe the opt-in policy is a great place to start. Teachers, as you know, have a tremendous influence on the, influence on the lives of students, but the downside is that a little power can go a long way, particularly if a teacher is interested and feels a calling to indoctrinate rather than to provide a solid education. I think the opt-in policy puts a reasonable barrier against indoctrination, and I'm all for it. Now, what I'd really like to spend time on is the objections to the opt-in policy. I think they're all easily dismissed. The first one is that it puts an extra burden on teachers. Well, that's easy. Remove any and all sexually explicit material, as defined by the state, from both the curricula and the library, and stick to teaching solid content. Then teachers can focus on catching up from the lockdowns perpetrated by Democrat leaders. As James Fetterman, president of the Virginia Education Association, said in addressing a decline in test scores, quote, "We need critical school personnel to be laser-focused on efforts to improve literacy." Exactly. So remove all explicitly sexual material, halt any sexual indoctrination, and stick to basics that have served well for hundreds of years. Objection number two: The policy is racist. That's another easy one to refute. Let's not look at the color of the skin of the author. If it's sexually explicit, remove it, regardless of the color of the author's skin. To favor authors of color in this regard is, well, racist. Objection number three: I'm more concerned with what parents are seeing on the internet. Yeah, me too. To favor, me too, but this is not a matter of if you can't beat them, join them. We're talking about library books and curricula. Parents have a responsibility in this matter too, and we need to have them own that. Objection number four: It's tantamount to censorship and book burning. Nonsense. A quarter of a million books roll off the presses each year, but the average high school student reads what? Let's just say 10. Whatever the number is, every book should enlighten and educate rather than satisfy a student's purient interests. Then the final objection: It creates an atmosphere of distrust. I prefer what Ronald Reagan said: Trust but verify. It could communicate to, on the other hand, besides creating an atmosphere of distrust, it could actually communicate to our, that our school engages and empowers parents to take ownership of their children's emotional, psychological, and sexual maturity and not leave that to a matter of the state. As anyone who's been around for a while knows, the state will assume more and more power to itself and never give any back. For all the good they do, schools are no exception. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My address is Post Office 42, if you need a mailing address.
We just need your voting district, sir.
Monroe, Virginia.
Okay. Thank you.
Phone number, if you need that?
No, sir.
Good. Next is Morgan Tyree. Oh, that's the letter. Okay. Okay. So I have a letter here from Morgan Tyree, an English teacher from Anellison Middle School. Dear School Board members, I'm writing you in regard to the opt-in policy. I wish I could deliver my comments in person, but due to a childcare issue, I cannot. It was insinuated that the last score, at the last school, school board meeting, that this policy would not create more work for teachers and would minimally affect instruction. One of the speakers at this meeting urged you to listen to the teachers on the policy as we're the ones in the trenches with students. I'm writing you to share the stories from the trenches. Last year, I taught ninth grade at ACHS. Of my 130 students, I taught about 50 honors English students and planned to have them participate in a book club as they culminated activity for the year. The students could choose between five different novels. Since some of the novels had recently been challenged in various districts across the country, I decided, I decided to send out permission slips. Of the 50 permission slips I sent out, both paper copies and virtually, I received, I received eight back. The grand total of 16% of my students returned their forms. I wasted my time and the school's resources for very little response. If the permission slips had been mandatory, I would have, I would have been forced to redo my unit, which took an entire semester to prepare. Now, can you understand why teachers are concerned? I am unsure if the Board members have actually read the definition that apply to new Virginia Code 22.1-16.8. I urge the School Board to read Virginia Code 18.2-390. While the new section of the code that refers to parental consent seems to focus on sexually explicit materials, the definition used under 18.2-390 are much broader and more vague in scope. Most teachers and librarians are concerned with the vagueness of the definitions discussed in the code and the wide range of implications it could have, could have on instruction. The fact is, this policy affects more than just anatomy and English classes. It affects us all. One of the Board members asked if we would, if we cannot fill positions in the county and how we will address this issue. Implementing this opt-in policy will not help solve the staff shortage issue, staff shortage issue we continue to experience. No one wants to work in a place with micromanage, that is micromanaged. We already have enough forms to fill out. Please do not add any more. Please trust our teachers, librarians, administration, and staff to continue to provide the quality education that our students deserve and change the opt-in policy to opt-out. Trust us to put our students' needs and learning first so we can continue to inspire every child, every day. Morgan Tyree. Next is Bev Jones.
I'm Bev Jones, District 5. Good evening. Based on comments from the School Board during the end of the February 9th, 2023 meeting, I have some concerns. It was stated that misinformation was out there, and I ask myself why. Is it because members of the School Board are pushing political agendas and instilling fear in parents with their propaganda and bias? To me, that's political. When School Board members attend political meetings that address our school's business without informing our school's staff, that's political. When School Board members use Facebook to push an agenda on banning books, using screenshots from the internet and book lists from far-right websites and promoting ways to encourage alternative schooling, that's political. I'm not misinformed. This Board was elected to represent all students, not a political party and its agenda, but that has turned out to be a lie. The policies that some of you have voiced are created to appease a political agenda instead of ensuring intellectual freedom and the First Amendment rights for all people. When you, as a Board, need a library materials committee created, everything about this told me how some of you feel about the expertise of trained librarians and teachers. During Black History Month, you, as a Board, mentioned nothing about it. I wonder how many schools participated in Black History events or even mentioned it. Were they afraid that you would accuse them of teaching critical race theory? During Read Across America, I also wondered how many diverse books were read or discussed in our schools. Instead of focusing on a political agenda, you should be focusing on what Amherst County Public School staff and administrators are focusing on: closing the achievement gap, mental health issues, as suicide rates are increasing among our youth across our country. Tardies, bullying, absenteeism, parental environment, recruitment, retention of qualified teachers. If you recall, our school system this year went without science teachers, English teachers, schools counselors, instructional assistants, bus drivers, and custodians that your staff works on every day. It is time to refocus your priorities, and let's start doing legitimate schoolwork. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Next is Lloyd Holman.
Lloyd Holman, 143 Dairy Road, Amherst.
Thank you, sir.
Why are so many of our teachers opposed to an opt-in policy as it pertains to sexually explicit material when it's agreed that there is no such material being used, proposed for usage, or historically used in Amherst curriculum? I think I understand why this is. The concern is entirely a matter of perception, but we must not forget that in most situations, perception is everything. Put plainly, it seems that the perception is that by furthering the opt-in policy, the School Board has signaled its distrust and lack of confidence in our teachers to do the right thing. Teachers were not consulted as to applicable history, facts on the ground, or anticipated curriculum development. In short, the actual practices and teaching in our schools were overlooked in favor of implementing a heavy-handed, unnecessary, and fundamentally insulting policy. That is the perception, and I believe that it is real and sincerely held. I think it's important that the School Board address and resolve this unfortunate development without delay. I also believe that the opt-in policy is beneficial and should remain in force. At the December meeting, Board members defeated, debated, excuse me, and approved language to require that parents must opt their students in to instruction that includes sexually explicit material as defined in the policy. This approach was affirmed by the Board with no dissenting votes. It's correctly noted that the opt-in approach is greatly more detailed and involved for teachers who plan to use sexually explicit material, that it would impose a near impossible, an unworkable workload on affected teachers. This is true. But this is no reason to abandon the opt-in policy. Quite the contrary, it is but one of the benefits of the policy. If we ask for a show of hands of those who believe there's educational value in bringing sexually explicit material into Amherst curriculum, classrooms, there would be few, if any hands raised. It's fair to say that the people of Amherst County affirmatively do not want sexually explicit material in classes, making it much more cumbersome, burdensome, and difficult to introduce. It is exactly what we need, and that is exactly what the policy does. At this point today, the policy question is moot, since the issues aren't present. The policy, in fact, is designed for the future, for the future, to head off possible situations that have been reported in other areas and is not in any way a reflection on any current activity or educational practice in Amherst schools. The Board should retain policy IIA as adopted. The Board should act positively to assure and reassure our teachers that there is not any thought at all that IIA is in response to any existing or anticipated situation. The policy is future-looking only, and that's what must be made clear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Irene Dean.
Irene Dean, and I am in the Ellyn School District. In recent years, federal and state institutions responsible for adopting policy in public schools have allowed schools have allowed themselves to be influenced by special interest groups who want to push divisive agendas. The consequences has become broad policy mandates because of problems seen on the national stage, and whether we like it or not, those agendas by the special interest groups do trickle down to Amherst County. That's why I endorse the opt-in policy for sexually explicit material. The point of the opt-in policy is to set ground rules for educators who are here or who may come into our school in the future as to how Amherst County wishes to treat sexually explicit material, and that parents will be given a say on what and at what age their child learns about sexually explicit material. We are assured by our teachers who have spoken out that sexually explicit material is not being taught at Amherst County, and I believe them. But I also believe the adopted policy was not designed to punish teachers or tell teachers that they're not trusted. It is not a policy that wants to exclude any child who may be different. It's not a policy to ban a literary classic, which may have some sexual material in it, but taken as a whole is still a literary classic. The policy was adopted in good faith to set ground rules and future expectations and provide recourse if something goes awry. Our school board members expressed on more than one occasion they were open to discussion on the opt-in policy by those who spoke against it. They wanted input, but it did not happen. Instead, at the last school board meeting, members were taken to task with accusations of creating tremendous work for teachers, banning books on the basis of race, and of punishing students who are different, and they were told to stop, just stop. What an unfortunate action. Collaboration would have been the better tool to use. One last point on the comments from the last school board meeting, and I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong. It's not a prerequisite to have children in the school system to be a school board member. What is required is a willingness to step up, a willingness to lead and serve, and to be elected in your district. Thank you, and thank you all for your willingness to serve.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Dawn Poole.
So nice to see you all again. I know I've been away. I have been keeping an eye on things and really just want to express my appreciation for what your vision is and what your goals are for our school. I am very, very happy to hear about the opt-in policy and honestly hope that we see more policy setting that allows parents to have a transparent communication about what's being taught in the schools. I also don't think that Amherst is doing all of these things that were brought up in the last school board meeting. I don't think that's what this is about at all. Again, I agree with several people who have been up here before that this is about protecting the future of our kids and the integrity of our school as we move forward. So I just wanted to, again, thank you for putting the opt-in policy in place. I will be enrolling my kindergartner in Elan Elementary with the Elan School District, by the way, this coming year, and that was a hard decision for me. You know, I took my kids out of school because of, you know, things that I was seeing. I took them out of the public setting. I feel confident that this board is moving forward in the right direction to allow us to really be able to work for every student every day, and so I thank you for that. I also want to thank the administration, and I encourage teachers to partner with the administration to come up with a strategic plan on how to address the opt-in policy. What are those regulations going to be? How can the administration support it? Those things are, you know, things that we can talk about, collaborate with, but I do trust Dr. Wells and his leadership team to be there for the teachers to work through that with them. I want to address the teachers in the trenches comment. Parents, we are in the trenches too, every day, trust me. Like, you know, my heart breaks for kids and some of the things that they have to deal with. And as a school board, I think it's important, and as an administration, I think it's important that we continue to come up with initiatives like Show Up Amherst, where we're talking about community effort. That is where we need to be. So I applaud you for your vision, for your hard work that you're doing. I don't buy into the propaganda about banning books in Amherst. That's not what we're doing. Again, it's about being transparent, and for teachers, it's not about distrust. You know, it's about protecting the future and the integrity of our schools. So thank you so much.
Ms. Poole, just a second. Did you get voting district?
Elan.
Just making sure she got it, right there. Next is Vance Wilkins.
Vance Wilkins, 299 East Monroe Road, Amherst, Virginia. I want to relate to you something I saw at the little Dixie youth girls who went to the World Series. I went over there to take them a check. We tried to help them raise money to get to go. I saw one little girl was already there, and the other girl got out of her car, and they ran and met each other and hugged each other. And one of those little girls was white and one of them was black, and they obviously had not been taught the critical race theory because neither one thought that they were the oppressor or the oppressed. They just liked each other because they're on the same team, they were compatible, they were friends, and they loved each other. And that's what I hope our schools help promote, not teach critical race theory and teach kids that you are the oppressor and you are the oppressed. It's hard to love somebody when you get that mindset, and those kids don't have that mindset. They're not born with that mindset. Kids are just kids, and if they like somebody, they'll like them, and if they don't like them, they don't like them. And we need to get away from that type of indoctrination, which is all over the country. Whether it's here or not, I cannot say. All I can say is I hope it is not. The other comment I would like to make is that you have a good set of rules here of your policies, but I'm not sure that they are quite plain enough or people have read them closely enough, and that may be what some of the complaints you're getting are coming from. And I would suggest maybe we look at these just a little bit, because the way I read these policies, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, please, it seems like that a part of our policy is not to use sexually explicit materials in our educational system, and we were told by the teachers at the last meeting that they don't use that. So if you make that the policy, then there's no paperwork unless some teacher breaks the rules. Am I correct in looking at reading it that way? Because that's what it appears to me, that your policy is not to use those things in your instructional materials, and if that's the policy, then there's no need to worry about having to do paperwork to opt-in it, is it? I mean, I'll ask anybody to correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Next is Reynolds Butler. Okay, thank you.
Hello, everyone. Hope you're having a good day. I'm Reynolds Butler. Can you hear?
Yes. District, sir?
District Monroe.
Okay.
Regarding the opt-in, opt-out debate, it is incumbent upon me to mention that the school board is not trying to censor or ban books, as they were accused of doing by some of the speakers at the last school board meeting. All the school board is doing with the collaboration of Supervisor Wells is trying to formulate a policy that gives parents control over their children's education, as codified by and in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Title 1, Chapter 2.1, Article 2, Section 1-240.1, which states that, and I quote, "A parent has a fundamental right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child," end quote. Also, one should keep in mind that we're talking about government, i.e. public school curricula and libraries, which routinely ban books and materials with good reason because there are materials that should not be anywhere in or near government schools, for example, books that promote violence or racism, or that contain graphic depictions or descriptions of sexual acts, all of which raises the question, why in the first place are there materials in the government schools that require parental permission? The only subjects the government school should be teaching are basic skills and knowledge: reading, writing, arithmetic, math, science, geography, English, foreign languages, history, and I mean real history, not revisionist fake racist history that demonizes 75% of Americans simply because of the color of their skin. And perhaps I should remind people that judging someone by the color of his skin is by definition racist.
Sir, please address the board.
So, to recap, the only subjects the government school should be teaching are basic knowledge and skills, and the only people who should be teaching manners, morality, and sex are the parents. If the schools would simply return to the basics, instead of trying to be social workers and proselytizers for various bogus woke ideologies, there would be no need for any opt-in or opt-out policies, and life would be easier and simpler and better, especially for teachers whose working lives are so encumbered by nonsensical bureaucratic regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Faye Smith.
Hello, Faye Smith from Monroe District. Okay. I'm opposed to the opt-in policy. This is a policy looking to solve a non-existing problem. If parents are so outraged about this so-called problem, then the parents would be completely filling this meeting. You have hired excellent teachers. You need to trust your teachers and your staff. Students do not exist in a vacuum. They communicate with other students. After a family life class, have you seen what happens? The first thing that happens after the class is the students of the parents who had opted their kids out run to find out what happened from the other students. You now have students telling other students what happened. They are empowered to give their interpretation, embellish, and frankly give misinformation. The teacher has now been removed from guiding the student to understand the proper information. When a teacher is admitted from the equation, misinformation is free to flow unchecked. I agree with the teachers that the number of forms that parents simply do not return. Their students, these students, will be disenfranchised with no fault of their own. The discussion and the speakers all base on that the parents are concerned with their children's education. Unfortunately, this is not always true in Amherst. Look at the percentage of parents that attend or even email concerning parent-teacher conferences. The responsibility and moral obligation to you is not to make the policy based on your own experiences or the speakers' here experiences, but to take in account all students. And remember that impartiality oath that you took? Yes, parents have a role in their student's education, but in this rural county, there are levels of education among the citizenry. A percentage of parents in this area have never finished high school. Some students still live in houses without running water. There are parents that cannot read the forms that you are even sending home. It is your moral obligation to impartially contribute to the education of these students as well as those who have informed parents, to not discriminate against them by assuming that the parents have the best interests of their children at heart and are involved in their education. What undeserved students are going for, have going for them are the excellent teachers that have devoted their lives and their time to prepare the best curriculum possible to serve all the students. It is wonderful when students are involved with all aspects of their students' lives, but look no further than all the discussions you all had in February and all of your other meetings about the absentee problem that you have in this county. Each of you chose to be on this board, knowing the amount of time that this position required. The time is tremendous, and I understand circumstances.
Ms. Smith, three minutes.
Beyond your control sometimes that you cannot attend all the meetings, but each of you swore an oath to impartiality. You accepted the moral obligation to the citizens. What concerns me is a board member who fails to honor that obligation and commitment to the county. In the February meeting, I listened to a number of passionate speakers. One board member casually came into the meeting after the speaker's comment.
Ms. Smith, I need to cut you off. Sorry, ma'am.
At the end of the meeting, this person said that the reason she was absent is because of a political agenda. She then, from her seat on the board up there, proceeded to discuss the political agenda. Partisan politics have no place at these board meetings when impartiality has been sworn to.
Next speaker is Lynn Cable. Thank you.
Hi, Lynn Cable, District 1. Sorry, dear. Well, at the last meeting, I mentioned that I'm not a parent, I am a taxpayer, and I see this opt-in policy as a good way of having to teach two classes for every single book that gets read, because you're going to have, you're going to have the parents who don't, with an opt-in policy, you're going to have a whole bunch of parents who do not return the form, and you are therefore going to have to come up with another set of things to be taught to those people, and that means you're going to have to pay for two sets of teachers to teach the same English class. At least, that's the way I'm looking at it. I have been assured by my friends who are teachers in the school, and I do have friends who are teachers in the school, that they are not teaching explicit materials, that they are doing what they say they are doing. I know that they are devoted to their students. I know that they spend a great deal of time with their students, and I just feel that the opt-out policy requires the parents to do something. If they, if something comes home, or if something, if they get a piece of paper, they have to know what's on that paper, they have to come in and say, okay, I want my kid not to have this learning opportunity. I want them to have to learn something else. That makes them take an interest. For them, if we have an opt-in policy, all they have to do is not do anything, and then their kids cannot get the curriculum as it has been designed by Dr. Wells and the teachers so that as it would be a healthy way and a good way to teach the material that has to be taught and to reach the goals that the state wants them to reach in terms of being able to pass the SOLs and things like that. So I am in favor of returning to the opt-out policy and not having the opt-in policy. I do believe that they are not teaching pornography in Amherst County, and I think we should have faith in Dr. Wells and our teachers.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Edward Cable.
I'm in District 1.
And state your name, please.
Edward Cable.
Thank you.
You know, my initial reaction to this was, this is nonsense. We don't need this. We don't have, sexually explicit material is not being handed to our kids. So I asked a couple of teachers that I know, and that's what they told me. And we've since, tonight, we've had several speakers, including the esteemed Vance Wilkins, who tell us, no, there's no sexual, it's all prevented. who tell us, no, there's no sexual, it's all preventative. Well, let me tell you, what it suggests is that people are doing this. What it suggests to parents is that their kids are being threatened and should be protected. That's false. Don't go for that. What you should do is either clarify what really is sexually, I mean, we've already had somebody tell us that woke, woke material may be sexually dangerous. We don't need this policy. It doesn't solve a problem. It simply creates more paperwork and hangs a sword of Damocles over every teacher to make sure that she communicates with all the parents, just so that every, so that she doesn't violate any rules. The policy is nonsense. It shouldn't even be there. And I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Gloria Witt.
I'm Gloria Witt, District Three, President of NAACP. First off, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations to Dr. Wells and his staff in putting together Community Breakfast. Couple of you were there. I think it's a powerful move in the right direction to get corporate America to engage in the uplifting and the, just engaging in education. Hopefully, they will be excited and send some of their employees into the school systems doing work hours so that they can just be a present, particular men, and also allow internships. The program that the school has stood up regarding the CTE is just an awesome thing, well-kept secret. So the challenge is gonna be, who gets in? Because it's all about the selection process, 'cause can't everybody do it? And it appears to me everybody should be doing it. That's step one. Step two, we have been having these conversations for 18 months. I have sit here and stood here and spoke to the school board about you wanting citizen feedback, you wanting parent engagement, you wanting feedback. Okay, this has been 18 months. I think we have responded to the call. You have heard teachers, you have heard parents, you have heard citizens. And on this issue of opt-in versus opt-out, we are chasing a ghost. I think the common agreement is, there is no sexual explicit materials, but yet because Florida is doing it, and it's the right game, right political agenda for the right, then suddenly it gotta be happening in Amherst. This is Amherst County and not Florida. And breeding distrust and disruption is just, it's a shame. It's a shame. You ask for the feedback, we're giving you the feedback. So as far as I'm concerned, it's your turn to show up and listen to the feedback and get rid of the opt-in policy. After all, we don't have sexually explicit material. So what are we guarding against other than disruption? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So that's all we had sign in tonight. Is there anyone from the floor? Yes, sir. Oh, go ahead. State your name and your voting district, please.
My name is Suzanne Chambers, Voting District Three. Thank you. So we've gone from preventing sexually explicit material to the little sneak on and on critical race theory. And so Marxist hunting in the 2020s identifies 1619 Project, Black Lives Matters. And we had to have a victim here, and it's white people, especially heterosexual, English-speaking Christian males. You know what? Some of my best friends are heterosexual, English-speaking, Christian males. And they're not panicked, so I guess they're woke, or worse, rhinos? Like, what name-calling shall we have for this? The Christian part sort of implies that all of this, everything to do with CRT is anti-Christian. It's really easy to launch those sort of accusations. The KKK has always maintained that they are first and foremost a Christian organization. Is that the kind of Christianity we're talking about? There are 200 denominations of Christianity in this country. The one I was raised in is considered a cult by a lot of people who live around here. So if all this energy and organizing and even money were put into making schools excellent, we'd be somewhere. We really would.
Thank you. In the back? State your name and your voting district, please.
Esperus. I live at 248 Pierce's Mill Road in Amherst. I, I was raised up in the school districts down here. I was raised up and I went through the schooling. I went through Amherst High, Amherst Middle, and Temperance. I have two daughters currently in this school system and have one that's going to be in the, I do believe it's my, you know, my, in my power to protect my daughters. I do believe we should go for opt-in. It's, you know, I do believe that they shouldn't, I shouldn't let them be exposed to sexually explicit material. I did great. Anything in this, in this school system that we wanted to do extra, we had to, you know, opt in for it, no matter what the class was. I came out good. So I do believe protecting my daughters, that it is good for opt-in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members from the, yes, sir?
Name of voting district. Yeah.
Okay.
Jeff Porter, District Five. I think the discussion we've had through this has been very helpful to see what wide, wide diversity of thought is prevalent within our, our community. I think for that to be public is important. The concern I have is that as I look at and have been here at most of these school board meetings where this has been talked about, I've really seen very, very few parents who have come and spoken to the board. And I think Dr. Wells and this school district are making wonderful steps forward in trying to get parents to actually participate, be involved in their child's education. I think that the percentage that was quoted earlier, about 16% of parents, parents responding to the survey, for me, just shows that for such a long time, parents have not been engaged. And this process of slowly getting parents back involved is critical because parents are the very foundation of our society, and we need their involvement, we need their input, not their silence. So, on the one hand, I'm grateful that we have this open, open discussion about what's going on with opt-in and opt-out and all the ramifications of that. But I really think that all of us need to work for involvement of parents and their presence here at the meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience? Yes, sir, in the back.
Sam Soger, District Two. I'm one of the parents, so I just wanna stand behind our teachers, and I wanna stand behind our administrators. I love what John Greiser said last month. He stood up, and I believe he's a good man and that we should listen to him. A lot of comments tonight said something like, well, I don't know what's actually happened to get Amherst schools. Right, you don't know what's happened to get Amherst schools, but the administration does, engaged parents do. And I really wish that you would just listen to the engaged parents. And unfortunately, yes, there are a lot of disengaged parents in our community. So, you know, when you talk about them, you know, where are they, or you want them to be more involved, well, there's plenty of opportunities for them to be involved. We need more volunteers. We need our PTO meetings to be more robustly attended. And so, I mean, I certainly do call on my fellow parents to, to pay attention to what's going on. But when I do speak to my fellow parents and guardians, a lot of them don't even know anything about this opt-in, opt-out issue. So that's certainly something we need to work on. But Board, I really wish that you would consider once again what the administrators are saying, what the teachers are saying, and the opt-out policy is, is perfect. You could opt your student out of anything you wanna opt them out on, of. And if a parent or guardian is concerned, then they, they have all the tools available to them to, you know, protect their children from any type of content. I mean, I hope those parents are also never putting the television on, you know what I mean? Like, can't hardly even watch a primetime football game without there being a questionable commercial, or even daytime television, you know, playing in the laundromat. So I really think, like, books are the least of our problems, and it is a straw man argument. It's a kind of false scare tactic. And I really, I trust our, I trust our schools. My kid's getting a great education. Thank you very much, ACPS. Thank you for your time, School Board. Peace and love.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the audience? State your name and address or voting district.
Greg Tyree, Madison Heights. I need more detail than that.
That's good. That's fine.
Okay. So this is my first attending a school board meeting. I raised my kids up in Amherst. I'm Class of 79. I will say this, I've learned a lot tonight about both sides. I have an opinion that I'm gonna keep to myself until I'm more informed, and I wanna be more educated. That being said, you can't expect parents to come to school board meetings that are 6 o'clock. They're, they're working jobs, and they gotta get dinner and all this stuff. So if we want parents to be at these meetings, it can't be at 6 o'clock. I mean, we gotta have some type of venue that you got parents working two jobs, three jobs, feeding the kids, getting them from daycare and things like that. I pastor a church. I do know there are parents that are engaged that can't come to these meetings. They care about their kids, they love their school. So that's not an indication of disengagement, or at least it's not the indication of disengagement. So I just wanna say kudos to the school board and to everyone that's spoken tonight. The respect that's been shown to each other is commendable, in my opinion. I'm gonna keep listening, but the main thing is, is that we do listen and we do, should sincerely hear each other, 'cause otherwise we're just sticking to our own beliefs and no one's gonna change us regardless. So we really do need to listen to each other.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Terry, I do have one letter to read.
Oh.
That was sent to me, and then that should be-
Okay.
All right. So this is from the Amherst County Sports Hall of Fame, and this is, I'm just gonna read the letter. And it's regarding a policy change. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Amherst County Hall of Fame, we would like to request an opportunity to come before the school board to discuss the possibility of changing the policy that governs when something such as a field can be named after or dedicated to a deserving person while they are still alive. In the past, we have nominated deputies into a Hall of Fame sooner than later because of their age or a failing health condition. We think it is such a positive situation when the person knows of the honor they have been awarded before they pass, or the health deteriorates to a point they cannot enjoy the honor. The driving factor for this request for the policy change is, after the ceremony on Thursday night for Coach Procopio, I was approached by numerous past students and athletes at ACHS who wanted to know if I would bring it before the Hall of Fame Board and ask them to spearhead the motion to get the existing policy changed with hopes that ACHS baseball field could be named in honor of Coach Procopio. Thus, he would know this very deserving honor was awarded him for credibility he brought to the program and the love the players who played for him still carry with them today. On Sunday night, the Hall of Fame Board Directors met and voted unanimously to pursue this action, to come before the school board with this request. As you know, myself and many of the, of the players who played for Coach have been discussing this for a long time. And the ceremony on Thursday put it in their minds with so many people who feel the urgency of this request. There is no one who deserves this honor more than Coach Procopio. In closing, I would like to thank you in advance for considering our request, and we anxiously await your decision to house a spot on the agenda for the next school board meeting to present our policy change request. I have attached the list to the Hall of Fame members with this letter in case you would like to discuss this matter further with any other members other than myself. Sincerely, Ronnie Adams, President, Amherst County Sports Hall of Fame.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So one last chance. Anyone seeing none? Dr. Wells, we'll move on to, is it 5.01?
To 5.01.
Okay.
Which is the budget. So I have a recommendation that you approve the proposed budget as presented at the work session that was held on March 2nd, so we can present this to the board supervisors on March 21st.
Board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the operational budget as we reviewed during our work session presented by Dr. Wells.
Okay.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Hearing none.
All right. Thank you.
Go forth. All right. 6.01, or six, consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
So I move, Ms. Chairman, to accept that.
Okay.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Dr. Wells? Consent agenda is approved.
All right. So Item 7 is regarding policy, and the policy is IIA instructional materials. And we've had a lot of conversation tonight regarding that. So one area we want to discuss first is, and hearing all the conversation this month and last month and in between, I know you've been getting between comments here, probably conversations of emails and stuff from members of the community, as well as people contacting my office. We felt it would be good in discussion with the board to develop a survey to get more information from our community members who cannot be present with us at these meetings. So we have before you a copy of the survey, and I don't know, Brittany, if you can pull that up or not. It's not attached. Okay. So a copy of the survey. And basically what we need to know, what I wanna get is consensus before we send this out. We have two options. We have Option 1, which kind of breaks it down as the, you know, opt-in versus opt-out, and we have it broken down by grade levels of elementary, middle school, and high. So if parents feel that it is good to have an opt-in for elementary and middle, and maybe not for secondary, they would have that option to voice that opinion, or they could have an option to have, say, we don't want, we want everyone to opt-in, or vice versa. So that is a policy, that is an option for you there. The other option is just, the other option for the survey is just, do you want opt-in or opt-out, basically. This will go to all staff, this will go to parents, and that way they'd give them a chance to give voice. We can give you data and therefore to help you in your decision-making process.
Board, have you had a chance to look at the survey? Board, have you had a chance to look at the survey that was proposed? Dr. Wells, do you need a motion to approve?
Yeah, I just want a consensus.
Consensus.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that I've reviewed the survey and I do really like the idea of a survey. I think that's probably a piece that we've been missing. So moving forward, I would support that. I would like to say that I think the policy that we adopted back in December was problematic for two ways, reasons. I think it was written from a perspective with the lens of an opt-out. And then we quickly made some adjustments in our meeting when we were working on it and we shifted it to an opt-in. And I can only speak for myself. And the reason for me was because we didn't have any and feeling that accountability for parents to understand if these things were brought into the school. So I think between it being written with one lens and then us quickly making a shift in our meeting because we were trying to come up and meet that January deadline, there's some ambiguity in it. I do appreciate the public's comments since that time because I think sometimes it appears as if when you come to speak to us, it becomes this side or that side and it, you know, it feels sort of divisive, but I try not to look at it from that perspective. I try to listen to reason in every single voice. And one of the voices that spoke out to me was, and this was from a teacher, there was a lot that the teacher said that I did not agree with because I think it could go either way. But what that teacher said was, "There's a lot of gray area." And when that gray area pops up, then I think that's where the fear comes in and teachers think, "Oh, do I have to do an opt-out or, I mean, an opt-in for this or that?" And personally, my intention was never to make an opt-in for our curriculum that's already been approved by the Board. From my perspective, it was, we have a curriculum that is approved by us as the Board and through our superintendent. And we do value our teachers and our teachers are teaching that material and we should be good with that if we've approved it. If it's material that's supplemental that a teacher or someone brings in from the outside of the curriculum that's been approved, then I wanted to safeguard that. We have an instructional technology policy that prohibits certain materials coming in to our classrooms through the Internet. So it was just an extra layer of protection. But in the same vein, I also saw it as a way that gave our teachers some freedoms to do what they needed. And Dr. Norman, do you care if I use the example you gave me? Or would you like to share it?
Either way, I think actually Dr. Wells has a couple of examples himself.
Okay, well...
But go free.
Trying to put this into perspective and figuring out that my responsibility is to get this right. And I guess I'm going longer than I need to, but before a survey goes, I want to get this right for me and the Board. And then talk to, about a survey because I don't want the public confused. But the example was that if we are teaching a novel that has some sexually explicit materials in it and it was classic and it's in our textbook, but that part has been taken out or removed, that it's been approved by us, the state of Virginia, and we teach it without that sexually explicit part, but there could be a teacher who thinks the value of bringing the whole novel into the classroom is beneficial for that student. Maybe it's a, you know, an AP English class or something. That teacher had the freedom to do that, but would just have to go through the steps of opting in, which is a little extra. But it was never my intent for it to be laborious or preventative for our teachers to teach the curriculum that has been taught. So speaking only for myself, I would like to maybe look at this policy, get our attorney to look at it, and maybe from my perspective, let's be plain. This is the curriculum that we've adopted. This is what our guidance is as a Board. And then anything outside of that, that's supplemental, that's resources brought in via Internet, we have shared resources that sometimes we don't even know where they come from. So it just puts a layer of protection for our parents to where they have a voice of anything that is supplemental for me. So that's, that's my take, trying to listen to both sides and do what I feel like our parents need, but also our teachers.
So Mrs. Thompson, I would like to dive into the policy a little bit and have some conversation if that's the purview of the Board. We can kind of have that and I can kind of go into the policy and make sure there's a clear understanding of where other policy is based on what is sexually explicit. And maybe that would help clarify some of the concerns. And then we can have further discussion if y'all so desire. Is that okay with the Board?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So I think we need to come to, like I said, we need to come to a consensus on the definition of sexually explicit as a term by the Code of Virginia and our policy and what that actually means for instruction. So if you look at the definition, sexually explicit content, if you look at that part of our policy, the part of sexually explicit content specifically deals with, and I have definitions, if I need to give the definitions, but hopefully I won't need to give the definitions. But if anyone so desires the definitions of these, I'll be glad to cite them. Sexual bestiality, lewd exhibition of nudity, sexual excitement, sexual conduct, sadomasochistic abuse, coprophilia, europhilia, and fetishism. Those are the terms, those are the areas that meet the definition of sexually explicit content. I think the one area, I think most people have a good understanding of sexual bestiality, sexual excitement, sexual conduct, sadomasochistic abuse, coprophilia, europhilia, and fetishism. But I think some people might not, I think the term lewd exhibition of nudity is very vague. I think we need to have some more conversation on that. So nothing in our policy really says anything about nudity in general because nudity is definition, and the definition there just states what nudity is. But the sexually explicit content that we're talking about with the state law and our policy basically says that you can't have lewd exhibition nudity. Right now, the state flag right there behind you has, meets the definition of nudity because there's a breast of a female on the state flag. Is that sexually explicit? Probably not. I don't think it meets the definition of sexually explicit. So we need to really think about that. So when we look at lewd behavior, the National Law Journal describes lewd as involve intervening sexual conduct that is considered indecent or offensive. So when we're talking about nudity, lewd or lewd nudity, that's when we get into the aspects of that. Is it considered indecent or offensive? There's nothing in our policy that states we would require parents to opt-in under our current policy, per view into classic sculptures like David and certain, and classical paintings or video depicting native tribes, either in their native areas of Africa or South America or wherever they may be. It's like a National Geographic video we all grew up with. Nothing says that would be a violation of policy because that is not lewd nudity. However, we also, our family life curriculum also falls in there and that would not be, that's an approved curriculum, that would not meet that definition of lewd nudity or the other aspects of the definition. Anatomy and physiology classes would not meet that definition. The biology classes would not meet that definition. So the things we're doing, looking at a portrait, a classical sculpture or a classic piece of art would not meet that definition of lewd. However, we look, we would look, need notification based on current policy if language or photographs meet the offensive or indecent aspect of lewd or if they are otherwise defined in the policy. Example, we go back to the terms of sexual bestiality, sexual bestiality. Does it lead to sexual excitement? Does it lead, does it have, does it describe sexual conduct? Is it madokistic? Is it, does it describe coprophilia? Does it describe europhilia? Does it describe fetishism? If those things are there, then it wouldn't meet that definition and it wouldn't need to be, have parental consent. So I think what's, I think the vagueness of the term lewd nudity was what's getting some people as far as, and teachers, I think, concerned because if I'm a world history teacher and I want to show portraits of, look at some classical art or classic sculpture, do I have to get parental consent to show that? I think that's where people are getting a little concerned. Or if I'm doing family life, do I have to have parental permission even though we have an opt-out policy for family life? We do it when they register for school as part of our registration process. And before we teach family life, we send a letter home, again, offering the parents the ability to opt-out. So I don't think the, I don't think the family life curriculum, the world history curriculums and those things of that nature as written would, would be part of this policy as you've written it as, by definition of what is lewd. So that might, hopefully it'll clarify some of those concerns and I can, we can put that into something that is not quite as, that's more concise than how I just described it to go home to parents and to our staff. I don't want you to, I think, when I look at that definition, the lewd nudity as opposed to the definition of nudity is what makes it, separates it from what we would consider needing parental permission for versus something that we would not as part of the general curriculum. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer.
Board?
Fully agree with Dr. Wells.
Mr. Chairman, I think, I really appreciate how you explained it and heartily agree with you. I think the only question I have is on the survey, if we can have an abbreviated or a plain or definition because I think getting parents to the survey, as we know, is a challenge. And if they have to link on something else that's law that might, I don't know. That's my only input.
Yeah, we're going to do a letter with the survey that kind of describes the purpose of the survey. And we have, we'll have the policy and the excerpts from the policy in that letter. So that'll go home, that'll go out with the survey so that way they can get the letter that describes the why behind it as well as that survey itself with that definition on there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One more question. Now, currently as a parent with a student, I get emails and I get text messages that have simple links to these items. I'm presuming that that's going to be one of the ways it's sent home.
That will be one way. We also will have paper copies for people who want a paper copy at their child's school.
Good. Will you have any paper copies, like at the front desk or anything that can be picked up?
At the school, yes, and here at the office.
Perfect. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Ms. Thompson? Oh, okay. You, okay. Okay.
That's survey. Let the parents speak on it.
Okay.
Thank you for being clear. I mean, thank you, Dr. Wells, for...
Yes, ma'am.
Extreme clarification and your comments as well, so, yeah. Let it go out there and see what happens.
So, Dr. Wells, do you feel comfortable with the way the policy is currently written? Or do you think that we can do better for clarity?
I think we need, I think our staff needs clarity and I'll take responsibility for some of that as well that maybe we haven't been as clear on exactly what it is. We've been trying to work through this aspect of the policy. So I think clarity as to what is, what meets that definition of sexually explicit needs to go out to our staffs. They get a true understanding of what is, what we consider, what the Board considers sexually explicit. So therefore, they know what that is. And it might relieve some of the stressors if that definition, that explanation is there. As you know, I proposed the opt-out when we did our initial proposal in December. However, again, it's the purview of the Board, but I would think if you did the, if you're concerned about certain age groups, I think that's where the survey there with the age groups might, might be more appealing to parents, maybe some of our staff as well, that you have age bands as to what will be opting, what will be opt-out. So I think having that option, that ability there for people to make comment on that is worthwhile.
Go ahead.
So my last question is, if this goes to the parent who's not engaged at this point from the perspective of opt-in, opt-out, and it just hits them while they're eating dinner, do you believe that they would understand the policy? I just feel like there's some ambiguities there.
I would hope, after I draft the letter, we have a version of it. I'll, I'll need to clean it up a little bit. But I would hope by the time I get the letter finalized in a good place that it would explain the purpose and they would, if they read the letter and it'll be in a format that I hope they can understand it, understand the policy. I'm not just going to throw the policy onto a piece of paper and say, "Here's the policy" without some explanation as to what the policy means. But again, I can't, my goal, my desire would be to draft it in a way that layman's terms, people could understand what it's talking about.
So, Mr. Chair, I think it's one, two, three, four, five, the fifth line down. So this to me brings some ambiguity. Amherst County School Board provides non-explicit instructional material and related academic activities to any student whose parent requests the student be provided with such instructional material or activities.
Yeah.
To me, that's what we do. It's not something that a parent has to provide permission for. So it's that type of ambiguity that I think could be confusing. That's why I am pushing for maybe us working on some of the language in the policy before the survey, but of course, it's what the Board wants.
Yes, ma'am. And I'd be, again, if y'all want to look at cleaning up the policy in general, I'd be in favor of that. I think it would just be good to get some feedback for you in general, though, on where we are, what the community and what the teachers feel. So there's some, even if we, if, we can do it simultaneously, we can get the feedback and that could help you maybe draft the revisions to the policy if that's the case on revising the policy. But if the Board so chooses to revise the policy first, that is fine with us as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a recommendation, I don't know if I'd make a motion or not, to the Board, that we actually rework the policy first and then issue...
Survey?
Because right now, I know the community, they're, they are confused on what it is and what we're trying to do. They're confusing multiple policies and...
Yep. So can we make the changes tonight or do we have to?
I would not recommend we make changes tonight because that's kind of what got us into this place in the first place.
Do you have the changes, I mean...
I would need to get your, what the Board's recommendations are for any changes and then I can draft changes and we can consult with Mr. Wright, our School Board Attorney, before bringing things back to you. So what I would recommend, if that's the direction you want to go as a Board, would be to send us recommendations for changes. We can draft, we can compile all those or we could have a work session in which we discussed it or we could do it at our next scheduled Board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I think emailing is probably sufficient or do we need public discussion on it?
We would need discussion before a policy is approved. But as far as you making recommendations, what that policy would look like, you do not need public input on that, but you would need public comment on the final version, on the final product.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question. It's about this topic. I know with my student, I get permission slips for field trips. What is, what, what happens when kids are going on field trips? Do we get permission slips from everyone or do we have, like, only a third of the kids go and the other two-thirds come back?
Depends on the field trip, but sometimes that does happen.
Okay, so, thank you. And then another thing I wanted to suggest is if at the beginning of the year, because there's going to be parents that are going to say, "No, I am fine," do they have an option on our paperwork just to say, "I opt-in," you know, to whatever. Do you know what I mean? So they don't have to...
A blanket?
Yes, a blanket opt-in.
I mean, as, as policies, again, since that's something we could look at doing, you'd have to have that in policy that states that, where you would have, or as a regulation, we could have that as policy because right now, the policy states, the state, where the code is written, we have to notify within 30 days of it being done. So we'd still have to notify within 30 days of it happening or at least within 30 days. So I guess technically, from a technical standpoint, you could say the first day of school is within 30 days, is more than 30 days of the content being taught. But that's something we could probably discuss and maybe want to get some legal advice on.
Okay.
To Ms. Justice's point, if, if there... To Ms. Justice's point, if there was something at the beginning of the year that they said they opted in, and they got a notice later in the year that said, hey, you've already been told that we're going to study this book, it's coming up in the month of January, would they need to say, again, true, yes, I opt in?
I think if it was something, if we went to that route, I think if you did that, then it would become more of a less, no, I don't want my, I've already proved it once, but I don't want my child doing it now. I'd almost go back, I'd almost revert back to the opt-out once that letter's sent home. Because if we went that route, I think that's where we need to get some legal clarification from, from our attorney.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Dr. Wells, I'm going to put you on the hot seat for a second.
That's fine.
Our current policy as defined, is there anything in our standard curriculum that would require a teacher to send out an opt-in form?
In our approved curriculum, I'm not aware of any.
Nothing. So no teacher would have to send out for the current curriculum, any...
For our approved curriculum?
Right.
What the board has approved?
Right. There's nothing under this current policy as it's written right now, with the opt-in policy that was added two months ago, no requirement, extra requirement for any teachers.
Not if you interpret the definition of lewd as I described earlier tonight.
All right. So so far, there hasn't been one instance in any of the schools, any of the grade levels, that would require a teacher to do an opt-in policy?
An opt-in for parental notification?
Correct.
Not based off of this. Now, there was some, there was some question about the Family Life. But if we go by this definition that I described tonight, then Family Life would not be part of that conversation.
Correct.
But Family Life does not meet that definition anyway. But
Right.
Because of the premise of Family Life, there were some concern that it, that parents would have some concern there. But it does not meet the qualifications of what this policy actually states. So I think sort of the clarification needs to come from.
Right, right.
However, it's not saying that by our approved policy, but I think, I don't want to say that somebody couldn't bring a student, couldn't, a teacher couldn't say, I want you to pick a book to read. And if a student reads, decides to pick a book off the shelf somewhere
Correct.
or off the internet, that is, that could be, have that content in it. That wouldn't be part of our approved curriculum. But a student could have gone home or gone to a bookstore and purchased a book they want to read that could technically meet that definition.
Correct. So everything that's been approved by the board meets that criteria?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Norman, do you?
Dr. Norman?
Sure.
You want to use?
Okay.
So I'll give you an example. We're there. I'll give you an example of what, anything that you have approved as a board, which are textbook materials. There, it falls in line with the state, it falls in line with your requirements, and it meets the definition of that. However, we have, so example, an eighth grade literature book has The Diary of Anne Frank. The Diary of Anne Frank is an excerpt of that novel in the literature book. I, as an eighth grade teacher, can teach The Diary of Anne Frank. I can use the textbook. I don't have to worry about anything. You've approved it. I know that it's right. We're good to get. The person across the hall from me, who is also an eighth grade teacher, who loves to do those literature circles, as a division, when we give funding to the schools to purchase novel sets, they choose classics. A classic is The Diary of Anne Frank. And it's the full novel. In that full novel, there is three pages in there that meet that definition of sexually explicit material. And the teacher must then send out to the parents to say, do you want your child to read this novel, this classic, or do you not? And it's an opt-in or an opt-out. They give that information upfront. And if the child, the parents choose not to use the literature in the novel set, then they're given the textbook of what you've adopted. That is the only thing that is out there that I know of when we're talking about classic literature that we have purchased as novel sets for our teachers.
All right, so the...
And that's not, that is not approved by you as a board. That is a resource and material. It is not an adopted textbook.
All right. So the, the portion that's been excerpted and put into the textbook one, obviously, the material in that is the instructional part.
Yes.
However, the novel itself, those three pages that are in there, don't have the literary value of the class. No, you're not going to, you're not going to extract anything from those pages that's going to give you any great literary advancement in education.
It's just the whole novel, if you want to teach the whole novel, that is available to teachers to be able to do that. And that's their professional judgment. I, as an eighth grade teacher, chose not to do that. But I had people that I worked with that chose to do that. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Justice.
Which part of our definition does that section qualify under?
I think it would be the sexual act, sexual conduct?
Yes.
Which one?
Sexual conduct. Or, hang on, I can pull it up.
You want to call?
Sexually explicit, described in pictures, motion, digital, lewd ex...
Nudity.
Defined in this policy, excitement of sexual conduct.
So excitement, is that added to the previous conditions, or does it stand alone?
That is in the definition of sexually explicit content.
So sexually explicit content is defined in this policy, again, it just says, sexual bestiality, the lewd exhibition of nudity, sexual excitement, sexual conduct, sadomasochistic abuse, coprophilia, euripheia, or fetishism. So if it, if it was a passage that described a sexual act, or it could arouse sexual excitement, then it would qualify as sexually explicit content.
That makes it quite broad.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Then the other question I have is on our resource material, even our resource material. I think teachers have to choose from BDOE approved and even, no?
No, ma'am. They do not.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? So unfortunately, we have to have a policy.
Correct.
It's not a, we can throw out the policy. We have to have an opt-in or opt-out.
We're required under Code of Virginia to have a sexually explicit policy. And that Code of Virginia says we have to have something that describes that we have to have within 30-day notice of a teacher teaching sexually explicit content that we notify parents. Now, the, the question comes down to, and Code does not say we have to opt-in, have an opt-in policy and an opt-out policy. It just says we have to notify parents within 30 days and give them an opportunity to determine if they want their child to participate in that, in that content. But we're required by Code to have a policy in place by January 1 of this year, of 2023.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Wells, on the policy as we have it written, can you think of any way for that section of sexually explicit to be clarified so that Anne Frank, you know, doesn't fall under that?
Well, again, I think, reading the definition as the state has written it, it makes it very, that's pretty clear. I think the only, I think the only place that's ambiguous is what is lewd with nudity, clarifying. But the other aspect of, if it describes a sexual act, then if it, so a book may describe a rape scene. If that's the case, even though it might be important to the character development of the story to know why the person behaves the way they did, if it goes into graphic detail about the rape scene, then that would be sexually explicit. If it just says, the person was raped, then it would not meet the sexually explicit definition. But if it goes into detail describing that, then it would.
But Anne Frank does not. So I'm still having a hard time understanding.
It does.
It does? So, explicit?
Yes, ma'am. There's three pages in there where she masturbates. And it goes into detail about that. Now, we have the same content covered in our Health and Family Life, but it is done in a different manner. Okay? So when you read the book in The Diary of Anne Frank, it is portrayed as sexually excited.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Board, anyone else? So I think you need the board to suggest a few changes to the policy.
Correct.
So that we can get it right before we send things out to the parents to do the survey.
Correct.
And then we need to make sure that our parents are looking at the survey, getting the survey either paper or electronic. We understand a lot, can't be here at this time. We all struggle to be here sometimes at this time. But we need them to show up and participate. And we get the, get some, some good data from our, our community.
And our goal would just be, again, to get some data that I can share with, with the board regarding that and get input from our community. And then we can make, you can make a decision based off that information.
So, Board...
Well, I don't think we're going to make a decision based off that information. I think it'll help us
Guide the decision-making process.
That's right.
This is a vote, this is a board decision, not a...
So, Board, we need you to send what you see as policy changes or corrections, additions, whatever, to Dr. Wells, so we can, he can formulate that.
You can do it either two ways. You could send it to Chair, and you could consolidate it, and then send those consolidated responses to us. Or they could send it to me, and then we can work on that independently. So if you prefer them to send it to me, then that's fine. Remember, as you send things, you can't, you can't send it to everybody. You can't respond to all. You have to send it directly, I would say, copy to the Chair and Vice Chair, and then send it to me. And that way, they're aware. But if you send it to everybody, then it constitutes a meeting. So just be aware of that.
Board, if you would do me a favor, go ahead and send it to me. I'll get it all together. That way, you're sending just to me, and it's only one person, and it's not everyone. And then I'll formulate it and get it to you.
That's fine.
And that way, then everybody can review what he has to make sure that the comments that you had were put in there as you expressed or expected him to see them. Okay?
Again, once we formulate that, I'll give it to you as a first read, and then we get, we'll get to review it at our next meeting. We can have, after that, I'll have Mr. Wright review, make sure y'all are in agreement with what is there. Then we have Mr. Wright review and those changes or recommendations. And then we can meet, we can have further conversation after, after that. If that meets the board's, if that's the desire of the board.
Board, yes?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to walk through the process in my mind on the timeline. If we do make recommended changes or things and some clarity comes to it, will we end up adopting the policy and then sending out a survey? Or would we send out the survey on our, because we already have a policy.
Right.
Survey for the parents to look at the one that we are considering moving forward with.
So what I would propose would be for us to draft a survey and have it reviewed by Mr. Wright. And once that is done, then we can modify the survey to be in alignment with the new, the draft of the policy updates. And then once you get feedback from that, then you could go into further discussions on the policy.
Board, anything else? Okay. Send me your comments. I will get them together, tally them together, and send them to Dr. Wells. Thank you.
Before we leave this topic, just like to ver, just like to verify that based off the definition we exposed tonight, that for Family Life, that as a board, we're okay with Family Life falling under approved curriculum, because you have approved that, that we would not need to have that as opt-in. That would just be continued based off what we did beginning of the school year for those parents. They had to go through that and part of their initial, that'd be the opt-out aspect of it. We will still remind them that we're doing Family Life.
Right.
They have the option to not have their child participate regardless. But as opposed to having to go through the opt-in, because it is part of our curriculum, and it does not meet the definition of sexually explicit content.
And that's part of our approved curriculum?
Curriculum.
Okay.
And any parent who wants to review that content can contact their student's school and is in the office, and they can come see the content. What is a PowerPoint, they can watch it, and they can sit down and go through it with them if they want to. So there's nothing there we're trying to hide. It's there. But I would ask that we had just make that as part of our approved curriculum and would not require opt-in as we're getting ready to start Family Life here around, right after spring break.
Okay. I would see that being the case. Anyone from the board object? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Where are we?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
So, moving on to 8.01.
8.01, Dr. Hoden and Mr. Roaks are going to discuss the construction grant applications where we are in construction process.
Yes, sir. Chair and members of the board, first thing, I know this has been a long process, but we made some final meetings this week with the architects. And within the next two weeks, they expect the project to be ready to go out to bid. So we're excited for that. Just a few small tweaks with the cafeteria and a few with the welding. And we're, we're trying to tie up those loose ends and get that ready to go so that that can go out to bid.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and actually, today, we just received some preliminary bid documents from our architect to review those, the items and everything before they go out. Secondary to that, the, hopefully, the first visual signs of construction of the auditorium, if it does go through, will hopefully start tomorrow. I've talked to the contractor who were removing some of the materials from the house. And due to their scheduling rain tomorrow, they are planning to be there tomorrow. So we're starting to see some of that. And I've also had contact with the demo contractor, who will hopefully be in there next week. And if everything goes well, by the end of next week, 178 Lanchelane House will be demolished. So we'll start seeing the first signs of actual construction. It's a demo of that house and getting ready to get out of there, so.
Thank you, sir. Board?
Chair, just a question. Dr. Hoden, I'm trying to remember the timeline. Were, were we supposed to go out to bid in February or March? Are we on time, on our timeline?
We're a little behind. We were going to go out toward the end of February, but now it's going to be more mid, mid, end.
So just a couple of weeks off?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And we were waiting on some feedback from the DEQ.
Yeah.
And some clarification there. So, but we should, we should still be able to meet our June timeline for breaking ground.
Right. They wanted that to be a little bit cleaner with the DEQ with the first reading before we put that out, in case there was anything major that they came back with. And then we would have to, already have a change order, which obviously costs more money.
Thank you.
Dr. Hoden, does DEQ have everything they need?
As far as we know right now, that letter that you provided is, was the first step. So we're, we're working through that. And we're waiting for them now to respond back.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll let you know.
Thank you.
All right. Next, in your packets, you have a drawing of Elon Elementary School. We discussed this briefly last week at the retreat. You'll see three options, option one, two, and three. After our meeting, Dr. Wells, Mr. Roaks, and I would like to include option two, which would be an eight-classroom addition to Elon Elementary School. And you'll see there, it's a little hard to see, but the parking lot will be reworked in that way. And the main reason that option two is the most feasible is due to grade and other things being in the front of the building. So what we would like to do tonight is to add that back into the CIP so that we could then apply for the grant for these funds. You'll notice in the top right, some costs. We added a few things, not just for the classrooms, but also for the toilet room, demolition of the stage, et cetera. Those can be removed as, if we need to. We wanted that cost to be a little bit closer to the $4 million. So those would be kind of add-ons, depending on, depending on the money. Those, the restrooms aren't in terrible shape, but we were going to renovate those to the, kind of the standard that, that we were at the high school. And then the stage would be demolished so that we could expand the cafeteria a little bit to give them some more room, because the stage really wouldn't be needed anymore right now. It's being used as a classroom.
Okay. Questions? So, Board, any questions there? Ms. Justice?
So, did I understand you to say the stage would be gone?
That's just an addition, if we do that. If we're able to build the classrooms, right now, the only use for that stage is for a classroom. And we have to pull the curtain. So it makes it a little challenging when, when we have a classroom and cafeteria is going on at the same time. So what that would do is that renovate the cafeteria for a little bit bigger So it makes it a little challenging when, when we have a classroom and cafeteria is going on at the same time. So what that would do is that renovate the cafeteria for a little bit bigger space for activities when parents come. Right now, if you've been in the cafeteria, Mr. Terry, Ms. Thompson, especially when parents are there, it's, it's a pretty, it's pretty full. So that would give us a little bit more room in that cafeteria, if you will.
And if we, if we do renovate the cafeteria, again, that's just another, that's an add-on option.
Right.
Adding the classroom space, you wouldn't need the stage for classroom space, obviously. And then it would create a storage. Most of the assemblies and things they do now, they use the gym floor as opposed to the cafeteria. So if we're looking at expanding the seating capacity of the cafeteria for students, that would allow for additional capacity in the cafeteria. But again, it's not a necess, it's not a necessity. It's just an option we could have, we could do.
And then the parking lot, expand out a little bit to make their parent pickup a little bit more feasible as, as you know, anyone that's been through there, the, that circle's pretty small for parent pickup. So that would, that would make that a little bit better and safer for, for parents as well.
So if you look at the diagram, you can see that we would expand the parking lot over towards where some of the trees are now. The traffic pattern will come in. Instead of having that small little circle, they would just come around. The existing sidewalk would separate the bus drop-off from the parent pickup and drop-off. And you still do the loop and you still have parking. It, it would increase parking in the middle along the edge. So we'd lose a few trees over on the edge there towards the wooded, wooded area, but that would also give us more parking and allow for that classroom addition coming off. We could, we'd sit eight classrooms, just, but you know, if we got to a point, I think six would meet the need, but eight, I'd hate, if we're going to build it, we can build eight for not much more cost than six and that way you'd have more space for additional growth and for a student class and a teacher to have some teacher work rooms and things like that in that area.
Well, for anybody who's driven through there in the afternoon when it's time to pick up students, will this increase the number of cars we can get on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Keep them off of the road a bit?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair, a couple of things. The cafeteria, I know you're talking about demolishing the stage because that's not needed anymore and maybe remodeling that cafeteria. I know we've talked about the space in the office area. Any conversation about how that space, that's the stage could possibly be utilized to ease some of the space issue in the office?
We. We didn't look at that aspect of it. We're looking at how can we capitalize on the space for our students and the cafeteria in general, so it wouldn't be quite as crowded. Talking with Ms. Scott, we have an office for a principal and assistant principal and a school counselor and a nurse in there. And looking at the value, looking at the, the most bang for the buck there, we thought that without having to renovate that space would give us more money to actually put it in towards classrooms. So we were looking at what could we do? What could benefit this, that instructional space more? So that's kind of why we went that way. If we went with the, anything in the office area, or we could look at some spaces where this current stage is and add some office space there, but I don't think it'd be that much to add a corner office in that area. Might be kind of loud during lunch, but I think you could probably do that without and, and still be gaining some space there if that's, if that's, we could talk to them about the price of doing that.
And I know this afternoon when I reviewed with Ms. Scott briefly, she was very excited about adding that in the cafeteria because of the, the parents and just being able to have more things in the cafeteria. She was, she was pretty excited about that.
And then my last question is, I'm noticing the yellow dotted line is.
That's the property line. That's the current property line.
Yes, ma'am.
There is an area there, and I don't know where it would be, that is part of the waterworks.
Right there.
Very front.
Right where that arrow is.
Yep.
This, take, move your cursor up a little bit there, Brittany, and back, right there. That little corner, not the corner that's inside the yellow, the corner outside the yellow, that's where the county owns. They own point three five seven acres, right there.
Okay. So nothing in this new area that you're proposing here would encroach on that?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I, I know why we've talked about increasing the classroom space there and I appreciate your dedication to making that a priority.
So how many lunches do they have at Elon now? I mean, how many lunch periods? Do you know offhand?
I do not off top, not here. Twenty minutes.
Another class goes out, kind of rotate some in, some out. It's never, all, then everybody out and all, okay. With the, with the additional classes, how many students do we have at Elon right now?
I don't have my budget book with me.
Okay.
Hold on, I can tell you.
I knew you, you would.
I'll tell you in about thirty seconds.
Let's throw you a curve. Keep you on your toes.
Give me a second. I'll pull it up.
Three thirty-two. Three thirty-two? Three thirty-ish? So we add eight classrooms with, with all the options, I guess it is. Yeah. So what would, you know, what would that capacity do for us? I mean, how many additional would that allow? I mean, based on class size, you know, average class size?
Well, it would, it would, right now, there, there's very little space for growth there. There's, most of the areas teachers use for like, some of our special education teachers and those teachers to have an office space because they're not, they don't have their own classroom per se. Some, some of those teachers don't. So it'd give them, we could use that for some of that space as well. But I think we'd, I would look at probably adding probably two or three instructional right now. But then again, we know we're talking about growth in the southern end of that zone. So we anticipate some growth coming to Elon over the next five to 10 years. So this would enable us to absorb some of that growth without needing to put on any more of those little relocatable classes out there that we're using right now for, for, for that. So it just gives you more, more capability.
Can we have Mr. Neighbors talk about, he had to move one of his friends out?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Norman had mentioned we actually had to move one of our preschool programs out of Elon in the last couple of years specifically for this reason, because we needed space to be able to achieve other classrooms and get other students served within that building. We had space in other building, we were able to relocate that. So thinking to the future and that is a growth area for us, especially with early childhood programs. This would be one location. Because of this addition, we'd be able to bring some of those services back into the Elon community. So I do think, looking at all the different angles to it, there's a lot of ways where this could enhance what we're doing there at Elon Elementary.
I, I mean, I know we have them shoehorned in right now, the way they are, just we have so many, I mean, it's, it's packed. So this will help alleviate that. I'm just trying to make sure that we already know of things coming, that we're, we're thinking ahead and getting the biggest bang for our buck.
And that's why we went with eight instead of six.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Good, thank you. Anyone else for? Yep?
Mr. Chair. Just one more question. I know we have the portable unit for the art over on the side. Would this allow us to remove that so that you can have access to the back of the building for emergency vehicles and things like that? Or will we keep that portable unit there?
Well, since we bought it, we may, we may want to keep it just for other purposes, but I would like to have all the students inside the school, inside the regular school building as opposed to a relocatable classroom. So I guess we'll have to look and see where we are, but we could relocate the building or we could just sell it and move it depending on where we are. But again, for general student purpose, I'd like to have them inside the heart structure.
I just, looking at it, you can tell that's very landlocked on each side, you know, so like for emergency vehicles to get around to the back.
Correct. We have space and Dr. Roaks, you can.
We left the room for a gate to get around there for smaller vehicles.
Yes, actually, there's, there's a gate to the left side of the, the portable classroom on the left side of the building. However, yeah, this school was built before the current fire codes. Under the current fire codes, this design or the layout will not be allowed because you, you have to have access within, I think, 150 feet, if I remember, remember correctly, to all sides of the building. Currently, you could possibly get an ambulance to that gate, but other than that, you're not going to take any fire apparatus, like that behind the school. But under current fire codes, you couldn't design it this way anyway.
But moving that relocatable classroom would, would alleviate that issue, correct?
It would, yeah. Removing the classroom, but then also if we truly want to do that, then we'd have to create an access road back there. And right behind the school, between the school and the asphalt playground, there's also septic systems right there. So it's not, but so much we can, it's forced getting access to the backside back there.
Thank you.
Ms. Terry?
Yes, sir.
The, you said something about preferring option two over option one.
Correct.
And, and we're working on growth. I, I would imagine with growth, you probably would require more teachers, so that would take more parking. Do you think maybe option one would allow for more parking in front of the school?
The reason we went with option two, option one, there's, there's a very steep gradient that goes into a wetlands area, about where that CL sits.
Right.
And so that would require additional funding to, one, the grading, but also the wetlands, getting DEQ to approve, that might be more of an issue. So option, what, option two comes off the front, where it's generally the same grade as the rest of the building. So it'd be less in, in grade aspects of it and cost.
Okay. Now, would there be an option, I don't know what the gradient is on the other side of the new classrooms to add parking there?
So we, if you look at the.
I know there's plenty of trees there, but we don't have a topographical.
That area lays fairly flat, so you could do more, but have us also make sure we have our sit back off the property line as well.
Yeah. Well, the, I guess the gym and the art room are grandfathered in? Is that why?
Yeah, that we could, we could get about where the gym is, close to, that's about as close we can get to the line is where the gym, corner that gym would be.
Right.
I really didn't want to take out all those trees because it do add some aesthetic value to the property. But we can discuss more with that as far as the parking, amount of parking we can get. But this is just the first very basic run at it and see if y'all are in general, the main thing right now, see if y'all generally in favor of going up option two. And then we can work out some more details later if, if it's the purview of the board.
Okay. Personally, I like it. I think it's, I think it will definitely help, like you said, the flow of vehicles through there, the, expanding the space that they desperately need at that school. And I, I like the, the concept, so. Board, anything else?
Okay.
You need?
Consensus to add it to the CIP.
Okay. I think you have it. Consensus to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoden.
The next thing I have to discuss is, was on Ms. Laconis', so I'm going to jump in here and talk about, we, I know we discussed some of the transportation needs that we had. We had ordered a, another diesel bus that was supposed to be built this month. I was informed on Monday that that bus was pushed out until August. So that led us to kind of scramble a little bit as we had this just last week, an engine in one bus and a transmission in another, which put us in quite another hole. I was able to wrangle some things around and find a bus. And it is currently having AC put in it. And we will hopefully next week take delivery of that bus. And the one that was being built in August, we will just move out to one of the ones that we, we were going to purchase for next year. So we were able to move some things around and Ms. Laconis worked with me very well on that. And so that's going to help us tremendously, especially because we're, we're pretty lacking on, on extra buses. So that's going to really help out. So just wanted to let you know on that. And then in addition, at this current time, we have, we were able, in February, able to do a few more buses. We have four buses currently with AC. When we take delivery of this, it will be five.
The bus that lost the transmission, was that on Cedar Gate heading up 130? Because there's a huge stain going toward the school. Noticed that.
Lost an engine and a transmission. So yeah, I think the transmission was out.
Was it, was it right there?
Yeah.
That's kind of what I thought.
Follow along with Elon School.
Yeah, I, I followed the trail all the way up. Yep. So. Okay. Nice.
So what Ms. Laconis speaks to you about with some financial things, you look at that, you'll, you'll see maybe some overtures, but that's one of the reasons there's an overture because we've taken delivery, but she, she can explain that to you.
Okay.
Also, my last thing, eight oh two, you have the February suspension report in front of you.
Any questions on that? Board, any questions?
Here are none.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hoden. Moving on, nine point oh one.
So now we have Ms. Laconis with finance.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the school board. Before you tonight is your February financial report from the revenue standpoint. So they closed the session adjourned on February 25th and the House and Senate did not reconcile their differences, which didn't help us finalize those revenue numbers for next year's budget. But we were pleased that they did pass what they called the skinny budget, which they can use until they reconvene. And that was addressing that state miscalculation in this current year. So we were pleased again that we were notified that we were home harm, hold harmless from that miscalculation. So with that being said, there's no new cap tool. So we're going to use the December, we're going to keep monitoring off of the December 16th cap tool with the understanding that that miscalculation is being taken care of. And that, if you recall, that December 16th did reflect the ADM loss. And we estimated it to be around $522,000 of decreased revenue. But we had a plan and we're going to continue to implement that plan and sort of just until the official cap tool comes out, you just prepare for the worst case scenario. So I was pleased to see that that, those fundings were restored. Again, we're going to talk about on the expenditures, there's been two areas this year that I've talked about is the maintenance because of the utilities and transportation. And I stated mainly because of the fuel. But I'm bringing the, I'm going to talk about the transportation today because if you look on your OptiCode summary, page five, it is showing that the transportation is projected to go over budget. And a lot of that is fuel. We currently have two buses that have been encumbered. So a lot of that, you know, he just stated that one of the buses we won't get, but he was able to replace it with another one. So we're going to keep monitoring that. We're going to look and see where the fuel's standing. But I just wanted to give you some heads up because we are, I'm planning on probably in May, coming to you with a budget transfer because you don't want to close out the year with any of these major categories in the red. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, we're going to continue to monitor, make adjustments where needed, and just continue to communicate with you as such of what we're doing. Do you have any questions?
This is a question for Dr. Hoden, actually. The bus that met its maker the other day, was that, what, how old was that bus?
I have to look at the year on that. I can get that for you.
I was just curious, you know, we, we talked about having some, some buses that were getting to the point they needed to be replaced. I was really hoping it was one of those and not a newer bus that we have gotten.
It did have some age on it.
Okay.
Trying to.
We do have a few buses that have, that are sitting on the lot that we're kind of scrapping off for parts. We're currently in the process of seeing if we can maybe rob a transmission off of an older bus to hopefully limp us along. So that's, that's kind of where we're at on that. The one that lost the engine was done. It's not worth repairing. So yeah, the good news is it wasn't an older bus and not one that's.
Yeah. Well, we know that we have some that, you know, are to the point, they've got to be replaced and, you know, if, we know they've got to be replaced, I'm, at least it's that one and not one of our newer buses that we don't want to have to put her place for quite a while.
Yes, sir. And like I said, the, the kind of unfortunate news, as you know, with everything else right now, order a bus, it's at least a year to 18 months out. So we're kind of lucky that I was able to wrangle this one and then keep the one that we're going to get and just kind of move it till next year. So that gives us at least a few on track.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Board, anything else for Mr. Connet? Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, let's see. Moving on, 10 point oh one.
10 point 01 is updated on accountability measures. And this is Dr. Norman, and she's gonna go through mid-year data with you this evening.
You're stuck with me now. Okay, so the first thing I'd like to be able to tell you is that in the month of January and February, we, uh, our students took 6,936 tests. That's an awful lot of, um, time spent assessing our students. But I will tell you, we received some really good data to give us information on where they currently stand. We're gonna, I think overload you with data, and I'm sorry about that. And I'm gonna try to give you as a concise bit of information as I can to kind of walk us through. We have, I'm gonna discuss with you three different types of data tonight. The first one is student growth assessment, which is a required assessment that all third through eighth graders take in the area of reading and math. They take it three times during the year. Virginia Department of Education requires this. The second one I'm gonna give you is information on the division benchmark. These are not required by the state, but they were something that we felt as a division. Last year, the last two years, we've done math assessments and reading and math. We needed to find out where our students were in the areas of science and in all of our end of course assessments in English and math and science. And so we gave those mid-year benchmarks, we recreated those. And then the third is mid-year PALS data for our K through, um, fifth grade students in the area of reading. So we're gonna try to walk you through all of this information. So the first thing is our, um, student growth assessments. If I can give you some information on vertical scaled scores. At the beginning of the year, I talked to you about, and you should have in your packet, I think, a copy of the presentation. At the beginning of the school year, I talked to you about the vertical scaled score that was actually developed by the Virginia Department of Education. And they were gonna give us a scale for the beginning of the year. And we would be able to use that same scale at the end of the year. And we could be able to determine if our students showed growth or not. In December, they changed that and said, no, we're not going to use the same scale. We're gonna change the scale. We got the new scale on Tuesday. So, um, they told us they were gonna change it and then we didn't receive it until this week. So what we did in order to provide our teachers with information and they could use it to be able to, um, project where they needed, what they needed to do and redirect instruction with their students. We took the vertical scaled score that the state gave us for reading and math and, um, over, I think it was in August that we got that, August and September. And it was in a four quadrant. We took that four quadrants and we mirrored it to match up to what the state accreditation requirements were. A level one, a level two, and a level three, the green, the red, and the, uh, the green, yellow, and red. And so that's where we're kind of showing you what that looks like and where we are. So this is the math vertical scaled scores for Amherst County Public Schools that mirrors what we would see on the state accreditation. And these are the levels for each one. This is where our students had to fall in order to get to these. Red is bad, green is good. That's all you gotta remember, okay? On the next slide, I'd like to be able to show you math growth assessments. And remember, this is, yes, ma'am?
The number's here.
Mm-hmm.
Number of tests?
No, that is the range of pass rate that a child scores on that test. And that's really all that the state tells us. Exactly. It's like a Lexile score. So if you look at this, this is math growth assessment. And what we wanted to be able to see is in the fall, in level one, we wanted that to decrease and show in the winter that we moved kids out of level one and into level three. And we wanted level three in the fall, which was high, uh, which was low to increase. So if you look at third grade, in third grade, level one, at the beginning of the year, they had a 43% of their, of the students actually fail the test. They had 36% passing the test. They had 20% that were bubble. I call them our bubble kids. They were right there in the middle. One test they would have, uh, one question they would pass, one question they would have failed. Those are the ones that we, that we, um, target specifically. So level one, 43% moved to, down to 26% failing. Level three moved from 36 to 50%. So we saw great gains. In all of the grades three through eight in math, we actually moved and progressed with our students the way that we needed to. And, and anytime Mr. Neighbors wants to jump in, please feel free. Okay? Going to the next slide, it actually. Yes, sir.
Quick question.
Mm-hmm.
The test or the assessment that they took in fall versus the assessment they took in winter, was it the same content?
Yes, ma'am.
Like, you know, the content they've covered in the middle of the year was a little different than?
No, ma'am, it was same test, same, same actual standards were covered in both. And they will take it that, and this S O L test will be taken in the fall, in the spring. And so it covers everything.
Usually the spring is a cumulative test.
Yes, ma'am.
So were they given that cumulative test at the beginning, the middle, and the end? So this is not even, um, the beginning of the year assessment.
Correct.
This is the end of the year assessment given three times.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That's how it was explained to us at the beginning of the year. So far, that's how it's kind of rolled out.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So does that mean there would be, uh, material that they haven't covered?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're gonna talk about that too. Okay. Um, this is just the summary of it. If you kind of take a look, grades three through eight, we increased from winter 24 perform, 24 percentage points at grade three, 17 percentage points. And all the way down to eighth grade, um, we saw huge success, I believe to be very successful. It followed the trend of over the last couple of years, our map scores where we had seen growth throughout the year. The next one is our reading vertical scale. Yes, sir, ma'am.
Dr. Norman, when they were tested in the fall, was that have been right at the beginning of the school year where they hadn't had any instruction yet? Or was it partway there too?
We started the growth assessments, and I'll get the correct date for you. I believe we started them in September, the first week in October. We had a window all the way at the beginning. They don't start right at the beginning of the school year, but very close to the beginning. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So this is the reading vertical scaled score. We did the exact same thing with reading that we did with math. We took the four quadrants. We mirrored them to the three quadrants for the state accreditation and, um, structured it that way. If you take a look at the actual next one, the same type of chart where if you look at third grade, we wanted to do the exact same thing. Take our level reds and decrease that from fall to winter. Take our level threes in green and increase that from fall to winter. In this one, we actually, um, showed the same rate, not as much, but the same going from level ones all the way to level threes and moving our kids by the grade level. I would like to point out in sixth and seventh grade, if you take a look at that, at our sixth grade, if you notice in the level two, that stayed the same 16%. We didn't make much movement in our, with our level two kids. And in seventh grade, we actually, um, showed where we went from a 35 to a 36, where we really didn't want to do that. So that middle school grade level in the area of reading, um, that is one of the where, one of the places that we're concentrating on right now. Yes, ma'am.
And the level two, is that what you call your bubble kids?
Yes, ma'am.
So would you assume that you had some move up and?
Yes, mm-hmm. Those are the exact.
Right, 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 right.
Yes.
Another question. Um, considering the information you got on Tuesday, how does, how we broke it down here compare to the principal?
Well, um, since it's 4,000 tests that I have to analyze, I really haven't had time to do that right yet. But I'm working on it, I promise. And Ms. Guel, I will give a, a shout out to Jill Guel and Ruth Matheny who have pulled data and analyzed data to pull this together for y'all. It's, it was a quite an undertaking and a, and a task, and they did a phenomenal job.
I think I misunderstood what was delivered Tuesday. I thought, I think how I understood it was that you got a structure of how things should be separated out.
Yes. Yes, we did. But then we have to take, it's called the C S V. I always want to call it C V S, but it's the C S V file that has thousands of student data pieces in it. Then we have to take that information and disaggregate it.
Thank you for what you did.
Mm-hmm. Um, again, on the next page, it really is just the breakdown and it shows you grade six and seven where we're, we're gonna concentrate specifically. I, I believe I talked about that. I don't want to linger on it. I will move right along. Um, the next part really is our benchmarks. And this is the test that we chose to give to see where our kids were because they will take a S O L test at the end of the year. And we just wanted to take a, a checkpoint, a dipstick, just to see how they were doing, um, in regards to it. We taught for, we took, we created a test based off of the, uh, state blueprints. Our teachers did, pulled it together, gave it across the division, algebra one, geometry, algebra two, reading, end of course tests, science five, uh, physical science, earth science, and biology. So let's talk about math. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, I have a question. Since we did it mid-year, um, and then we have the second one. If we show significant improvement, even if we don't quote meet the requirement, that will be in our favor, right?
Yes, ma'am. Um, they, everything is able to be in our favor except for chronic absenteeism. And I'm gonna let Ms. Petron talk about that. Yes, ma'am, it will. It will count for us. So in the area of math mid-year benchmarks, algebra one pass rate currently right now, and if I can just make a caveat, they took a test that is for the entire content, beginning of the year to the end of the year. So when they took it in January, there's half of the year that they have not been taught yet. Okay? So just, I'm gonna say that over and over again if I can. Algebra one, I want to kind of give you some information. Currently, right now, we have a 61.54% pass rate. Last year, our pass rate at the end of the year was 57%. So we have already moved above where we were last year. Um, and I'm excited about that. Geometry, we're at a 36% pass rate right now. Um, last year, we had a 69% pass rate. Algebra two, I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. We're at a 30% pass rate. We were at 100% pass rate. Now let me talk to you about geometry and algebra two. Geometry is the required S A test. It's required by the federal government. Because we teach algebra one and we test students in algebra one sitting at the, um, middle school as well as the high school, we needed a high school test and the state of Virginia chose geometry. So every kid in the school who's sitting in a geometry class right now must take the geometry test. Not every child has to pass the geometry test. If they have already taken algebra one and have already passed algebra one and received their verified credit, they just have to sit for the test and click, 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 and they don't have to pass because they've already received their verified credit. Okay? So we do know who has to pass.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just curious if, um, Dr. Norman could please repeat the pass rate for last year for algebra one again? I missed that.
Yes, 57%.
Thank you so much.
And is that end of the year? Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
End of the year.
All the comparison numbers you gave us for algebra one, geometry, and geometry, uh, algebra two were compared to end of the year.
Correct.
Based, okay.
So 57 last year for algebra one, we're already at a 61.54. 69% for geometry, we're currently at a 36%. Algebra two, last year, we had 100%, but if I can clarify, one child took that test. And the reason that was the case is we normally, um, we don't have to have children take that test unless they're sitting in the class. They don't have to pass it. The only people that have to pass it are like, right now, we don't have anybody. Last year, this was a transfer student in and they needed that verified credit. So they had to take that and they had to pass it, and that counted for us.
Yes, ma'am.
They passed.
Me too.
All right, so I'm still trying to understand this geometry question. So you have, so every student in a geometry class?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, has to take.
The geometry test.
Geometry test.
The end of course test.
The end of course test. But they're not required to pass because that credit isn't required for their graduation?
The credit counts for them, but they've already received their verified credit. So you have a certain number of verified credits where they have taken the course and they've actually passed and mastered the course. And we have one that is end of course, uh, reading and writing. They have to have that as a verified credit. That's the only one that's given. They have to have a math verified credit. They have to have a science verified credit. But they can take earth science, biology, chemistry, and all of those are tests that are given an end of course test. They only have to receive one verified credit, which means that they have to pass that one. They don't have to pass any of the other ones.
So if they passed algebra one, end of course test for algebra one, they've received their one verified credit. Even though they're in the geometry class, they're not required to ha, pass that test to meet the graduation requirement by the Department of Education. Therefore, some students don't take it as seriously as they should.
And I'm gonna give you some numbers here in a minute, okay?
Mrs. Thompson, you had something?
Do we have any requirements for our students to pass that course? I mean, to pass that assessment?
Any, like as a board, have you put anything in our grading system that says, no, ma'am, we don't?
So there's nothing that says that the S O L would be part of their grade?
No, ma'am. Actually, in all honesty, the state says, they used to have it in the standards of accreditation that you could not count it as a, as a grade in your actual. And, and I'll have to check, like I couldn't use the S O L score for a grade in my course.
So it just concerns me that we are being rated as a school system using low standards instead of having a high benchmark for our students, and we don't have control over that.
Correct. And I, I don't know if people understand that. That's, yes, ma'am.
So my question would be, what options do we have to put it within our control? To motivate our students?
We're discussing how we can incentivize.
Right.
Another discussion maybe for another day, but that's eye opening.
Yes, ma'am. Um, let, so, yes, ma'am?
Okay, so, but we're gonna check and see if it, if we still can include that, or maybe we can include that in the right now. We're not prohibited.
We, I'll, I'm gonna check on that. I think we still are, but we used to have a sliding scale. I believe when I first came here to Amherst, there was, if you got this on your S O Ls, if you got, if you passed your S O L test, you got, uh, A for an exam or something like that. But then the state said, no, you can't do that anymore. So, but I'll confirm to make sure that hasn't changed. So let's talk specifically about algebra one benchmark in regards to our subgroup data. The 299 students actually took the benchmark in, um, February, I think it was, in first, last week in January, first week in February. I would say we had the greatest gain, um, in our subgroup of two or more races. And we saw a significant improvement, um, in regards to our students with disabilities across the board in regards to that. The next page, and this is where I'm gonna talk to you about the geometry. In this, for our geometry test, we actually gave 288 students the geometry test, that they took that test. Only 18 of those students actually have to take it and pass it for their verified credit. 288 took it. 18 are the ones who have to pass it because they did not pass that algebra one test. Those are the children that we're working with and that we're focusing on because that impacts them on graduation. And our teachers are putting together incentive programs and, um, you know, high expectations for them in class. high expectations for them in class. So we're, we're trying our best on that. The algebra II, again, the same, pretty much the same. We had 190 students who took the test. Nobody needs to actually take it, actually pass it. They all, if they're sitting in the class, they're required to take it. We don't have to have anybody pass that for their verified credit.
Which is a good thing regarding graduation, but it's not a good thing regarding SOL pass rates.
So the takeaways for our math benchmarks. Algebra I, I'm really excited about this pass rate. I know that sounds crazy, but moving that far into being over where we were last year and them only getting half of the year's content already, and we're above where we probably, I expected us to be. We are right in line to hit our state accreditation and probably even hit our ESA requirements that are new federal accountabilities, which is 72% now. Which I'm going to talk about that after I show you some data. Algebra I, three out of five of our subgroups exceeded the overall division pass rate. Of course, our areas of concern are still supporting our black students as well as our students who are identified with a disability. And really pinpointing areas that they are weak in and then providing them remediation and interventions over the next couple of months. Then we're going to go to reading. Speed this up. Okay. So two in the end-of-course test. Last year, we had an 88.62, 88.52 pass rate. Right now, we're currently at a 62.21. I will like, like to tell you that that's 254 students that took the test, but this was only the reading portion of the test. I want you to know that that 88% pass rate last year was also combined with the writing test that they take. And they take that in March, and they usually do very well on that, as well as work keys tests that are given throughout the year for any student who does not pass those tests. So we're actually on par for where we have been pre-pandemic. This is where we usually would average out. So I was excited to see that we were not any lower than that. In regards to our subgroups, our pass rate, our greatest gain was seen by our white students. Again, not as much gain with our students of disabilities, but it was higher than it had been in previous years. So I was very excited about that. We do have some work to do across the board in all of our subgroups. And our instructional specialists are working directly with teachers at both middle schools and high schools to work in our area of reading and writing. Benchmark takeaways for EOC reading. We are on par at 62 to get to the standards of accreditation for 75%. The new federal accountability for ESA is now at a 77. And if we do comparable us to last year, which was right out of COVID, then I see us surpassing that 88% that we had. Two out of the five subgroups, of course, exceeded all the division overall pass rates. And we are continuing to work with our black students, our students with disabilities, and those who identify in two or more races. They showed a low pass rate on this reading. In the area of science, our mid-year benchmarks, we had a fifth grade pass rate of 5249 last year. Ending out, we had a 40% pass rate. So we have already surpassed our fifth grade science from our SOLs last year. Physical science, last year, it was at a 36% rate. Right now, we're hovering at a 32, 33%. So we're very close to surpassing what we were. Earth science, we were at a 57 pass rate last year. We're right now at a 54, 55%. And then biology, last year, it was a 51% pass rate. And right now, we're sitting at a 33% pass rate. Again, I want to remind you about biology. It's the same thing we're dealing with in math. Well, first of all, we are still working to get licensed biology teachers at the high school. So we have some vacancies there. We have put into place an in-mentum program to help with the curriculum and the substitutes that are in that classroom. We've got an instructional specialist in the area of science that's been pushing into the classroom and supporting the subs. And then Dr. Wells is working on some support for the high school as well in the area of biology.
Dr. Norman?
Yes.
Excuse me. How, how long have we had this dysregulation between everyone that's in that class has to take the test, but they don't have to pass? How, how long has that been unequal that way?
About, this is our, I'd have to go back and check, but I think this is our fourth, fourth or fifth year. It's when the new, Every Student Succeeds Act went into place by the federal government. And they set new graduation standards across the country. And that is when ESA actually made regulations on Virginia. And Virginia had to put in its consolidation plan, which we can talk, I got a packet for you on that in your information, because they've changed it again. So 269 students took the, I mean, go to the next one. So let's talk about grade V science. Grade V, 268 students actually took grade V science. Our largest gain across the board in content area specific with students with disabilities. When they, when those children took reading, math, and science, science was the one that they showed the most gain with. And I'd have to say that is really attributed to what the teachers are doing with some hands-on experiences and getting out into the community, getting out into the creeks. You know, Dr. Wells puts on his waders and goes out there and catches trout with them, or releases it. You don't catch them, I'm sorry.
He catches them later.
I'm a city girl. Catches them later.
Catches bugs.
So we've been very excited to what we've seen this year in our, in our elementary science programs. The physical science, in regards to where they are, 269 students took this test. I will tell you that I am continuing, we are continuing to struggle with our middle school science. Last year, we were at a 36% pass rate over at the end of the year. This year, we are sitting at a 32 at mid-year. So we are, and that's the whole content area from start to finish. So we're doing better. We are just not back to where we were pre-pandemic. And I will tell you, our teachers, they're doing me-wees and they are getting in there with science experiments and they are adjusting their lessons. So it's just really, what do we do next? And so Ms. Smith has worked wonders with our science program this year, and I've been very, very pleased with that. Biology? No. Earth science. Let's go to earth science. Sorry. 254 students took earth science. Of course, we teach earth science at the middle school level. Our area, that subgroup that saw the largest gain was our Hispanics. I'd like to remind you that the small population, so you're going to see a bigger gain with that. But across the board, we saw nice advancement in there, in that area. Last year, we were at a 57% pass rate. We're already sitting at a 55, 54.7. Now biology. So biology, 324 students took the test. 106 students need to pass the test. Okay? So when you look at where we currently are last year, we were at a 51%. This year, we're at a 33%. This is our largest group of students who took a previous SOL test and did not pass it. So they took earth science last year, sitting at the eighth grade level. Remember, they were on an abbreviated schedule and lot went online. And so they did not pass their earth science test. So they moved to the high school, knowing that not only did they have to take the biology test, they have to pass the biology test, 108 of them. Since I've been here in the last 10 years, it's the largest number of students that we had fail one year and move to the high school, needing to take a test to graduate from school. That is why we've put lots of things into place in regards to those vacant positions. And this is an area that both Dr. Wells and myself and, and Mr. Neighbors are very concerned with in regards to this. We're talking about students and their graduation right now. I don't know if you want to comment on anything? We'll move to the next thing. The science takeaways. So fifth grade, I will tell you that we have concentrated specifically there because we have two schools that are accredited with conditions, Central Elementary and Madison Heights Elementary. And both of them have made very significant advancements. So let me give you some numbers. Central Elementary, last year, as their SOL score, they used what was called the combined rate. It was a three-year average. And they passed, they had a score of a 61.59. It was not the 70%, so they went under conditions of accreditation. The actual kids that tested last year, fifth grade, they scored a 38.89. So even though the school as a whole got 61% pass rate, the testing year showed as a 38%. Fifth grade science right now is sitting at a 57. So they've made huge gains this year in re-working spiral reviews with their fourth grade content to make sure that they kept that in the loop, because the fifth grade science test is fourth grade material and fifth grade material. Madison Heights has done something astronomical, I would say. They, in their last year's score to the state, three-year combined over, was 62%. But last year's current year, meaning a one year where in May they took the test, those kids' only pass rate was 15%. They've gone from 15% pass rate and they're sitting at a 60% pass rate right now. They've done a lot of hands-on experiments. They've done a lot of providing the kids opportunities to work together. It is, they do small group instruction in science, which is amazing to sit and watch, because normally you see that in math and you see that in reading, but you don't see that across the board in any other. And it's, it's nice to see that happen. Overall, the areas, we still have concerns in those subgroups. And I specifically have some concerns regarding our middle school science and our biology.
And Dr. Norman, I wanted to jump in there before we move on to PALS. Talking about subgroups specifically, so obviously, we don't look at our subgroups across the board as a whole, look them all together. We have to do something about our subgroups. We talk about our individual groups of students down to the individual student, because that's really what it takes when we're talking about not just recovering some of this knowledge and stabilizing where our students are, but being able to get them to that point that we need them to be at the end of the year. I do think it's important for the board to know, specifically for our students with disabilities, we present the data as students that have passed. There are, there is, I should say, a structure for credit accommodation specifically for our students with disabilities. If they don't quite meet that threshold, they are still able to get that verified credit towards graduation, so we don't take that into account for the data, because we want our students to pass that test. We want to prepare them to be there at the end of the year. But important, I think, to echo what Dr. Norman has been talking about and the amount of work that has gone into really drilling down to the individual student level. That's how we're going to be able to bring these subgroups up to that expected level of performance, working with each individual student, figuring out what those needs are, what might be impacting them within these different content areas and developing those plans and pathways for them to be able to achieve at that higher level. It's amazing to go into classrooms and see the work that our staff is doing, places where we wouldn't typically see small groups operating. We're seeing small groups operating because we have that many different skill sets, that many different deficits that we're trying to address within some of these groups of students. So just kind of wanted to reiterate some of what Dr. Norman had said, but also put that plug out there for our staff. They see this not as a subgroup concern or as a subject-level concern. This is really about the individual student, what they are showing, what their data is demonstrating, and how we're trying to meet those individual needs. And there's just been tremendous amount of work with that, to plug the work of our staff. But obviously, we're going to continue to work for that. I know my area specifically, when we're talking about students with disabilities, we are not pleased with those numbers. Those are not the numbers that we aim for as a staff. And if any, any of my teachers were up here right now, they would say the exact same thing. But we are proud of the progress they have made so far this year. I know they'll continue to do that through the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Neighbors. PALS. So PALS is a required videoe, reading, literacy screening. Ruth Matheny pulled all of this information together for you. You have a huge packet that not only gives division information, but it goes school by school by subgroup. I am not going to go through all of that, but I am going to show you how to look at the chart. Okay? So the first thing is just, I need to give you some background information in regards to PALS. So we give PALS in the fall, we give it in the mid-year, and we give it in spring. Last year, we had a 7% reduction in our number of students IDed, which is really, really good. We want to see a drop in those numbers from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. It's kind of opposite of the SOLs. SOLs, you want to see the number grow. PALS, you want to see the number decrease. We had 28% reduction of identified students in Title I program. Those that are receiving services is huge. And that was a 9% reduction with specific groups of students across the board. 7% reduction over the summer, which had us having 30% of our students identified in the fall. And I will tell you that we maintained that, which is unheard of. We had a great summer program that was able to support kids and that helped us when they came back and they took their PALS test in September. September and October, I believe, is when it's given. The next thing, this is the chart that you're going to see by school, by division, by subgroup. It's just a lot of data. I want to point out three different areas for you. The bottom quadrant, the bottom left portion of the chart, where it shows fall to mid-year comparisons. That fall-to-mid-year comparison, what you want to be able to see, that increase right there where it says 3%, that is good. We want to see that more students to be reading on grade level, and that is where you want to be from fall to mid-year. We want to grow. So we went from 63% in the fall to 66%. We grew by people reading on grade level by 3% across the division. If you go right on across, this is what we're projecting in the spring. So on the right-hand bottom, it is the spring ID projection. And that is at a 6%. And we want to see this number actually decrease as we end out the year. So we want to make sure that we have students who are still, students who are still below the benchmark. We've got to calculate that somehow, and we want to project where they're going to be. We're projecting that 6% of our students will still be below where we need them to be. Last year, if you can remember, that was 7%, and we maintained that through the summer. So we're seeing some actual growth there. We've gone from 7% last year. We're projecting 6% this year. And then if you follow up on the right-hand top side of the screen, that is that 8%. That increase is actually good, because those are the students that, who were below the benchmark at the beginning and at the fall, but they've met, already met at mid-year. They've met that benchmark. They are on grade level. They are on grade level in their reading ability, and we're very excited about that. And we want to maintain that through the end of the year and then over the summer. And if you have any questions about any of these charts, reach out to Ruth Matheny at Sorry, Ruth. I know she's listening. Okay. PALS mid-year data overall, 3% increase in students reading on or above grade level, which is tremendous growth right now, so we're very excited about that. 8% of them across the division have made sufficient progress to meet their mid-year benchmark. We're projecting a 2% reduction in the number of third-grade students that are ID'd. And I will tell you, the state is concentrating specifically on third-grade students, because they are those kids that were at home during COVID, were on, only in like two or three days at school or doing online. And so they have really targeted that third-grade group. And then we're projecting a 6% overall increase in students ID'd.
Excuse me, Dr. Norman. Would you accredit the improvement of the reading and the hiring of our reading resource teachers?
I would, in regards to across-the-board division, we have a phenomenal reading specialist in our division, in our elementary, our middle and secondary. We have our instructional coaches that are really pushing into our middle schools as well as our high school. And I would say that we've seen gains that we have not seen before. Is that, can I say 100% that that's the reason? No, ma'am, I can't say that. But I would have to say that if I didn't have those people in place, our licensed reading specialists, that we would not see as much growth. I do think that they have brought a tremendous amount in our programs, the science of reading that has been brought in. That's been great for our students, especially our younger kids.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for asking. The last thing, the overall, I think I did that. And these are our takeaways. Our Title I intensive systematic support, we want to give explicit instruction to those students. I would say that we're noticing an increase in students that are reading above and on-grade level. And they are, it tells us that our students are gradually improving with their word recognition, their decoding, and that's important to us. And focusing on that and their core instruction, so tier-one instruction, what every kid gets, if we can push in and do some significant things for every kid, what we do for one kid is great for all kids. And so when we, when we get teachers doing that, we get our reading specialists pushed in, that's amazing, and that's wonderful for our children, and that's what we want. And I am finished, unless y'all have any questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Petrot.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I have a question. I'm looking at the mid-year data takeaways, and on your last bullet, it says historical increase in first grade identified due to the change in tasks that removes letter sounds. What do you mean?
Yes. So in regards to what we currently do, so we've implemented the science of reading in our, in our elementary program. Central Elementary actually piloted that program last year. It is now required through the state. And so all, I would have, I think all but six teachers are now involved in it. That specific task, we've removed how, there's two things that happened over the last three or four years. You know how you go into an elementary school and they have the letter of the week? You know, we're going to start with A, and A means stands for apple, and that's gone away. We don't do that anymore. We don't teach letters just by themselves. It's a different way of going about teaching letter sound, word recognition, and how the decoding comes into play. I am not, well, I took reading classes, but I'm not a licensed reading specialist. And I can get you the specific information. But when I actually go in and talk about how to teach children to read, that specifically, that letter recognition, that word recognition, being able to, the automaticity that we have, that is all-encompassing, and our reading specialists do a phenomenal job with that.
I would be interested. Thank you.
I can make sure that Ms. Matheny and Ms. Wheeler reach out to you. You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I have the pleasure of talking about attendance. I'm going to start by kind of explaining the difference between chronic absenteeism and truancy. So often, when people think about students who are not attending, they immediately think of truancy, and they're very different things. So chronic absenteeism is when a student has missed 10% of the school year. So right now, we're at 120 days of school. A child who has missed 12 days of school would be considered chronically absent. When we finish up the school year, we'll have had probably about 175 school days, if there's some snow or something. So we tend to look at 17 days for the school year as being chronically absent, because we never really make it to 180 days to have 18 days. Truancy, on the other hand, is when a child has missed 10 days without an excuse. So they're very different things. As you know, chronic absenteeism is what our accreditation is based on. It is focusing on missed instruction and trying to encourage students to be in the classroom as much as possible. Truancy is outlined in the Code of Virginia, so it's basically following the steps in the law. And there are legal consequences. We have two very different approaches to handling chronic absenteeism and truancy. So to talk about that a little bit, with chronic absenteeism, some of the things that we've done are like our Show Up Amherst initiative, where we're trying to build a culture that is belonging and inclusive, and everyone wants to show up and be there every day, where we're trying to teach kids good skills and how to be a part of the community and all of that. That all is our tier-one type of work to encourage students to come to school every day. When we're looking at truancy, on the other hand, we're holding meetings, we're calling parents, we are holding people accountable, we're having conversations about if this doesn't change, we're going to go to court. So they're two very different approaches. Go ahead, yes.
Mrs. Petrot. So why the switch from truancy versus chronic absenteeism?
So truancy is, again, it's in the law, but chronic absenteeism is the state's standard for accreditation. It's not an Amherst decision.
But why did, why did the, do we know any rhetoric?
The Department of Education put that as an accrediting factor prior to the pandemic. It was first put in prior to the pandemic, but it didn't come into effect until...
Correct. Under every Students Succeeds Act by the federal government, one of the, you have to have grad, you have to have different levels, so we, of accreditation. And part of our accreditation is attendant or chronic absenteeism, as well as graduation rate, that's a part of it as well.
And they don't differentiate between a student who is sick a lot but still gets their work done?
Correct.
And someone who is just not showing up?
Correct. And that is a state decision, it's not anything that we have any control over.
As one of those sick kids who had to do a lot of work to keep her grades up, I see that as very unfair.
We would agree with that. Okay, so looking at how the state breaks down the accreditation requirements, for this, the attendance that we are experiencing this school year will affect our accreditation for next school year. If a, if our attendance, I'm sorry, if our chronic absenteeism rate is less than 15%, that school will be fully accredited as far as attendance goes. They would have a Level 2 level of performance if they're between 15 and 24%. And then Level 3, which would be 25 and above. Going forward, we kind of started over this year. We have a three-year average typically, where we can say, like, we can average the last three years, and you take the best of what you did that year or that three-year average and pick your level. That's starting over, and we just get what we get this year. Next year, there'll be a two-year average, because they'll have two years to work with, and the year after that, there'll be a three-year average again.
So this year, ma'am, Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
So this year has double, double the impact?
Exactly. Yes. And here is where we are as of, when did I pull this? February 23rd, which was 11 days. So we were at 110 days of school at that point, and that meant 11 days was considered chronically absent. And to just kind of walk you through this chart, obviously, the school is there, and then the next three columns are the number of students who would fall into that bucket for it to be that level of accreditation. So at the high school, if they have 202 students or less who are considered chronically absent, they're in the green. If they have between 202 and 316 students, they're in the yellow. And if they go above that, they're in the red. Right now, I know it's kind of hard to see up there, but right now, they're sitting at 235 students, so they're already in the yellow. And if we look at their accreditation, or their predicted accreditation, it would be the second column from the right, where it says current chronic absenteeism rate, they're at 36.66%. I need to look at this here, because I...
That's what it is.
Yeah, okay. It's hard to see up there. And so that's where they're at right now. The next column is where they were at the end of last school year. So you can see there's been improvement at the high school, and some of our schools have improved, some of our schools look worse this year. It really just depends on the school and what they've been going through. And my next slide kind of speaks to that. This gives a progression every 10 days throughout the school year of what their attendance has looked like. The darkest red is when it's been the worst, or in Temperance's case, the darkest yellow. That's been their worst number of the school year. And then the far-right column, where it says 110 days, is where they were when I pulled this data. To give you some good news, it's 120 days now, so I have pulled it again, it just didn't make it into this presentation. And Amherst Middle School has moved into the yellow, and Temperance has moved into the green. So we are continuing to make improvements. Every school across the board improved by at least a percentage point at 120 days. So we're continuing to make improvements. I feel like part of what has happened, I feel like this is going to die on me, too. Part of what has happened is that the students have learned that a sniffle doesn't mean you stay home anymore. Last year, we were saying, stay home with everything, if whatever's wrong, stay home. Students and parents, it took a while for them to kind of get that message, and now they're, they've been hearing so much from their schools, and they're getting so many letters and so many phone calls about attendance, that they're starting to say, okay, you just have a sniffle, go to school. And so we're starting to see some improvements in that area. There's a million other reasons for why our attendance looks the way it does. There's definitely the impact of anxiety on our students, and not just our students, but what I'm seeing with truancy specifically, is with our parents having anxiety about letting their children come to school. So there's a million different reasons, but we're working really hard to do those tier-one types of things, like Show Up Amherst, like having incentives for improved attendance, like targeting students and having them come and have lunch in specific places where they talk about skills, and they're trying to talk about that, like, what would it take for you to improve your attendance? How do, how would you feel more comfortable here in this building? And so we're doing all of that stuff, trying to improve these numbers, and I, you can see it working. It's starting to progress, and things are getting better. And that's, yes, Ms. Justice?
Yes.
With the parents who are afraid to send their kids to school, have you gotten a feel for what the number-one reason is? Is it health, or is it safety, or what if...
Yeah, it's, there are health concerns. A lot of times, I think it's just the individual's mental health. So the parent is struggling, and they want their child by their side, and that's, that's what's going on. Any other questions about attendance?
So, Mr. Chair, I would want to thank you, Dr. Norman, and Marie for this information. But I think we really emphasized the fact that, you know, they can't learn if they're not in school. And so we look at our attendance rates being where they are, and we look at our projected SOL scores and where they are, and I think there's a correlation there. So we really need to make sure, really emphasize, if we do nothing else tonight, when we do our comments, that we emphasize the importance. So again, as we have throughout the year, being in school makes a difference, and you can't learn if you're not here. So please do anything you can to come to school, and that'll help the student learn more, and that'll help us get through this process.
Dr. Norman, could you go back through all that again?
I already have a migraine. May I, may I explain something to you? In your packet, you also have by-school information. We don't, it's in board docs, it's not actually in your packet that you have, but it gives you very specific information regarding each school. We don't provide that to the public, because some of our subgroups are so small, that it's identifiable by student.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Because I have one more thing to talk to you about.
Or any other questions? So I would like to thank, thank you, as an echo, I'd like to thank you for all that. It's, the numbers are going in the right direction. They're not where we want them, of course, you know, but, but they are going in the right direction, so that's, that's positive to see. We just encourage the students to hang in there, keep the parents, keep them, keep them coming. So, thank you.
Sure. I agree with you on that. The second thing that I have, and the last thing that I have, as you noticed throughout the entire presentation, we talked about the changes from what the federal government is now requiring us to do. And you should have a packet like this that starts, it is information regarding the consolidated, Virginia's consolidated plan. They are required to submit this to the federal government in regards to every Students Succeeds Act. It is what we are then held to. So we have the accreditation, state accreditation information, and then on top of that, we have the federal accountability. The federal accountability was changed about, we got the information in January, we provided that information, the end of January, we provided the changes to our principals at their February principals meeting. We are now providing that to you. It is too much to discuss with data, and I don't want to confuse the two with what we have to do with the state and what we have to do for the federal government. So we will come back to this at a later date, so you can, you can read through it. I wanted to give you the information. If you'll notice, this piece right here, this is where we took all of the information that the state and the federal government have given to us, and this is what we actually gave to our principals. So it was an easy snip-by-snip of what the changes are and what that would look like for them as they then start to, and this is a change that has to happen at the end of this year, so they changed midstream to us. We thought we were starting out on one thing, and it's not. In December and January, we found out that they've moved the cheese, and it went all the way to the other end. And we must meet those goals now. And so we're kind of in the process of making those changes. We wanted to give that to you, and we will come back to that at another date. And Dr. Wells, I am finished.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to move into human resources there, Mr. Chair, if that's okay.
Thank you. 11.01.
Yes, Mr. Chair, men and vice-chair members of the board, we're about to make up some ground here. The first thing that I have tonight is our vacancy memo. In this month, we have it broken out between current vacancies that are, that do remain in this current year, and then those that are open next year, next school year, based on either retirement or resignation, so you can take a look at that. You've had that to review. I will note a few updates. We're moving and shaking here. So actually, the English teacher for the current year, that should be a one now. We have one of those filled and accepted. So we have the three science teachers that you see for the current year, that is correct, but they are all filled for next year. So that's good, that we have hired all our science teachers in biology for next school year. That's a plus. Wish we could fill them right now, we're working on that as well. So elementary teacher for the current year, that's actually a zero, as we had an individual who had been filling that position as a student teacher slash long-term sub, actually accepted position. School counselor, we do still have one position this current year. We do have two candidates that are in the process of review for that, so hopefully we'll have some movement there pretty soon. For next year, what is pretty amazing is under elementary teacher, where you see six, we actually only have one position. Now we have hired five of those, so that is positive news. So all told, that is the vacancy memo that I have for you this evening. Do you have any questions about any of that information? Do you have any questions about any of that information?
Mr. Gallagher, so you're saying for '23, '24, we would be looking at four positions open?
Well, if, not exactly. It's close. But if we don't fill that CTE, that will ultimately move over into next year. If we get it filled, then it will not. English teacher, we have two ultimately. One currently open, one open next year due to retirement. If we don't fill it this year, that's going to move. So it works like that.
I see what you're saying. Okay, I got you.
So there is potential for some of the ones on the left to move to the right if we don't fill them.
Right, right, okay.
Good question. There's a little bit confusing there.
Thank you. Board, anything?
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. The next thing that I have is not, actually, I think up on Board Docs, but it is something that I asked you to place at your place in front of you there. And that is an update on the ACPS Career Fair data. We talked a little bit during the Board Retreat. I told you that I'd provide a clear breakdown of the participants in that we felt very good about, not only the numbers, but just the quality of the candidates that came through that day. And I appreciate, Mr. Chair, your presence at that Career Fair as well. That was meaningful and helpful. So that's a breakdown of all the different areas, both in-person and virtual, per content or grade level and so forth, for your information. What I feel like is worthy of note, I placed at the bottom, which is just from the Career Fair itself, the one that we held that previous Saturday, the 25th, I think it was, in February. We have hired one English teacher and five elementary teachers, just from those individuals. We still have two offers outstanding that may be accepted. So those are the two in the waiting for acceptance. And we have several interviews scheduled with some of the folks from that fair that have yet to be held, but that, sure, they show promise as well. So we just feel good about that. It's like that's a good return on the investment that we put into bringing some of those excellent candidates here to Amherst County to meet with everybody. All told, we've hired 13 teachers for the current or next school year positions. You know, as you can, six of those are from the Career Fair, but 13 in total. And that's kind of how we also have those biology positions filled. So we are, we're rolling. We're doing everything we can to expedite these processes, get the interview scheduled quickly, provide tours as necessary in the schools, and get individuals to join our team.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Justice?
Mr. Gallagher, looking at this, how does this compare to pre-COVID?
How does it compare?
As far as our hiring? Because it looks pretty good.
Well, so I'd have to look back, to be quite honest with you. I will tell you, though, and I think I've referenced this before, and this is my fifth year here. But the prior two years, or the first two years that I can remember that we went throughout school years without being roughly, fully, you know, filled, you know, with vacancies that still existed throughout the entire school year. So we did have successes. You also saw the applicant trend during the Board Retreat. So you know that pre-COVID, we probably had a higher number of applicants to select from. So we probably weren't pressing it as much, you know, and trying to have to hit it so early to make sure we can compete for these applicants. I will say that our Career Fair showed successes. I know the one that we held actually during COVID, that we did fully, virtually, I think we hired five or six at least candidates from that. So we, you know, fortunately, we have shown success from the Career Fairs that we've hosted and put on our own. So that's been very successful.
It just looks like a sense of normalcy and going in a positive trend.
Yeah, absolutely. It's promising, which is helpful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Board, anything else? So Dr. Gallagher, I mean, Mr. Gallagher, I would like to say that, you know, the Career Fair was very impressive, you know, to walk in and see all the schools doing their stuff. There was not a single room that wasn't being used for interviews when I walked in. And everybody, and people were waiting for rooms to do interviews. So, I mean, it was impressive to see the volume of people coming through and doing things. So keep up the good work, sir.
And thank you for saying that. Just because you said that, I don't want to forget to thank all of the administrators and, you know, from the schools and Central Office for participating and helping with that because that was, that made a huge difference. So thank you.
Right. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Where were we, 12?
12.
12.
12.01. Word from our student reps.
Can you hear me? Okay. So first, I wanted to mention that March 17th, we're having another show-up day, as well as combining that with Reading Across America. And I got to participate in that last year, and it was really cool. But I think this year will be even better because last year, we had to do it virtually. So we read to the elementary school students, like, via Zoom. And this year, myself, as well as others, are going to have the opportunity to go to the elementary schools and read books to them, as well as engage in their day. So I feel like that's exciting, considering all the things you guys have been talking about with, like, attendance and just wanting to show up and come to school. Another thing is April 9th is the Day of Giving and Neighbors Helping Neighbors opportunity that I'm also volunteering for, as well as some other classmates. So again, I think that'll be nice to, like, get the community involved. And we're doing that during the school day. So I know emails have been sent out to a lot of parents to try and get students involved in that. And then also, the Amherst Theater is performing their musical at the end of this month. So if you haven't already, you should go online and try and buy tickets to go to the show. I know the open night is March 30th. And then I think they go all the way up until that Sunday on that weekend. I know I got my tickets, and I'm excited to go. So you guys should all go. But yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hello. All right. So a couple of things I have to mention, or that I rather want to mention. A lot of sports are starting back up. I believe there's soccer, tennis, softball, baseball. It's like a total of, I think, 10 scrimmages today. So that, along with outdoor track, which I'm a part of, it's all really cool to see start back up. That, nominations for Homecoming Queen, King are coming up. Prom, generally, that's a big deal for a lot of people, especially the lady to the left of me. And then, yeah. Cool. What's cool is on March 28th, a tour to CVCC is going to happen with the seniors and maybe some juniors from Amherst County High School. And it's also going to be pretty cool because I'm going to be giving the tour. And yeah, that's pretty much all I have to mention. Thank you.
Thank y'all. 13.01.
All right. Superintendent Matters. First, I want to talk about spring monitoring. So on Tuesday, we had our meeting with the Department of Education. And actually, this afternoon, we received our follow-up email from the Department of Education. And it was a very positive response. Basically, they hit some several points. The Division Leadership Team implemented initiatives, including the Amherst Show-Up Days and Back to Basics and the Lesson Plan Expectations. The fact that our staff is very involved in instruction. Division Leadership Team intentionally focused on required Lesson Plan components. The advisory committee helped develop the different Lesson Plan templates. They highlighted the principal's monthly meeting and quarterly reviews. And they also highlighted the need to differentiate and support to individual schools. So overall, the feedback at the meeting and through their communication back to us, to individuals, that things for schools were very positive, that we are doing the things that we need to be doing to improve our instructional programs. So I want to thank, part of this process, I want to thank everybody engaged in that. Part of this process was that Mr. Hutchinson from S. Heights Elementary, Derek Adam from Central, and Mr. Crawford from the high school all had to endure 30 minutes apiece in front of the state, given a overview of their programs, but also answering questions throughout the process. And they did an excellent job of communicating to the state what they are doing in our schools. And at the end, I got to have my 30 minutes of time as well, in which I had to talk about the division aspects of it. And Dr. Norman assisted me there. But I think for our principals, it was, I think they felt the pain a little bit leading up to it. But overall, they did an excellent job of communicating what we're doing to the state. And the feedback was very positive. So I just say thank you to them and their staff for all they've done. Because the principals communicated the information, but, you know, the teachers and what they're doing in the schools and the other staff in the schools doing the things they're doing gave them the data they had to have to give the state this information. So it was definitely a team effort to get all this done. And Dr. Norman's team for helping compile all the data made a big difference, too. And we greatly appreciate all their work. Anything you want to add to that? So, very positive. It was good to have some positive feedback from the state on that. Next, I have policy KLB. And I just wanted to spend a few seconds talking about policy KLB. And KLB deals with the public complaints about learning resources. That's the title of the policy. And there's been a lot of communication at our meetings about that as well. And so I just wanted to clarify that, that community members have the authority to question learning materials and learning resources. When that is done, a committee at that school is comprised, usually, it consists of the building principal. It consists of a library media specialist. It consists of the parent and usually a teacher. And then we can put other resources there as well, including Central Office staff to assist in that review process. So when that review process is initiated, then, you know, we have to review the books. And then the decision is made by that committee as to what the outcome is, whether a book is removed or other things are done regarding that material. Of the two, of the materials in question, so far, they've met on two of the books. And it's been placed in Destiny as a parental consent, parental permission for the student checkout. But those books have not been removed from our shelves. But the parents do have to get permission in Destiny based off those two books that have been reviewed thus far. I believe they're going to continue, or I know they're continuing to review other materials that have been brought to their attention. And so as they go through that process, you know, that will be, but there is a policy in place for that review process. So people need to understand, if there's a question about a book, we do have school board policy, KLB, that specifically details how that process takes place. So I just want to put that out there and just make sure everybody understands there's a policy in place for that. There's policy KLB. Okay?
Dr. Wells, quick question, yes. So you said the committee is formed, and it includes the parent two questions?
Yes.
The book?
Yes.
So a new committee is formed every time that a book or a group of books or a parent comes up with something? Is that what you're saying?
At any school, so for example, let's just use Amherst Middle, for example. If a parent at Amherst Middle wanted to challenge the instructional materials and materials in general, then they would bring it to the principal's attention. And the principal would form that committee that consisted of him or her, the library media specialist, a teacher, and that parent. And we could also include other people. But at least those four people are involved in that committee. And they read the material, they review the material, they discuss it as a committee, and then they vote, just like we do here, like you do as a board. And then the decision of that committee goes into effect. It is appealable to me or my designated, and then it could be appealed to the entire school board if that were the case. But that's how the policy is written.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Board, anything?
Just a little clarification on the committee. It says that a review committee consisting of the principal, library media specialist, the classroom teacher, if involved, a parent and/or student, and the complainant. If the complainant is a parent, then is an additional parent on the committee.
We've been using the parent as that person. We can have more, but in the essence of time and the amount of material being read, the parent that is complaining, or the caregiver that's complaining is who we've had on that committee.
Okay. Board, any more questions? Okay.
Okay. So Community Leaders Breakfast. I'm going to switch it up a little bit. Sometimes you got to be careful what you wish for. And I'll say that. The Good Idea Fairy hit earlier in the year, and I said, let's try this. And so Brittany went to work and got things organized for us. But we had a great turnout. We had around 60 people show up from the community, from various businesses. We had community members, leaders from county government, sheriff's office, the sheriff was there, town police, and so forth. Those were great. Jeremy Bryant was there. And just a good turnout. And we had some good, I think, some good conversation and good discourse. And of course, some of you, Ms. Ligon was there, and Ms. Justice was there, and Mr. Grausler was there. So it had some good conversation. I really wasn't sure what the turnout was going to be at first when we first threw this out there. But within about three or four days, we had 30 people saying they were coming. And I was like, man, that might be okay. And then, but then the nerves started hitting, making sure I hit the right stuff. But I just wanted, I just focused on where we are as a school system. I really wanted to make sure people understood our budget process. I really wanted to make sure people understood the need, why we need parents and community members engaged with our students and focused on that. And then we also want to make sure they understood our needs in the CTE department, what we're doing in CTE, but also the fact that we need those partnerships with local businesses for our internships and our work-based learning opportunities. And I feel we had some good conversation. I've already met with, talked to a couple of folks after the meeting who are some of the larger businesses in the county who want to get involved with us in a different capacity. So I really feel that's been, that was a good meeting. And it also just allowed people to have some time to talk about, at their tables, about what they're doing and just build that sense of consensus there among the community. So I felt really good about it. We've had some results from the survey, and the results have been really positive as far as the information we've received back. So we'll probably try to do it in the fall and in the spring, and maybe mix it, switch it up a little bit. That's what our focus points are. But we'll try, I think we're going to try to do this a couple of times a year. From the survey data, that's what people said. Well, they would like to do it at least a couple of times a year and have this opportunity to get together and talk about the schools and what we're doing. So I felt really good about it. And again, I'm glad we did it. I was kind of dreading it yesterday morning about 9:00, but I'm glad we did it. So, any questions on that?
Board, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Wells.
So school calendar. Want to make a couple recommendations. And this is for you to consider and ponder. But we've missed two days of school this year for weather. And it doesn't look like we're going to have a blizzard anytime soon. Who knows what's going to happen? But if the conditions stay the way they are right now, we have banked 25 days above the 990 because we haven't missed, we haven't been going two hours late. We've had two two-hour late days, and we've had two days we've been closed. So that being said, I would like to make a couple of recommendations to the board regarding our calendar for this year. First would be April 17th, which is the day, the Monday after the spring break, that Monday would be to have that as a no-school day for staff and students. The next would be graduation day, May 26th, would be a no-school for students, but a workday for staff. That is, again, that is graduation. That is grad, again, that is graduation. And for those of you who have never been involved in a high school, we do rehearsal that morning with students that are seniors, and half the teacher, probably 30 teachers have to be over at Divine Center to do graduation rehearsal, which means we have 30 less teachers in the building. So it makes a difference there. And then we also have families, teachers who have students that are graduating, who have families coming in town and things of that nature. And since it's on that Friday night, I think it would be good to be off, to be able to have a workday that day that would free up our staff to prepare for graduation and things along those lines. Those are my two big ask, well, those are two of my asks I would like to, you to strongly consider. Another ask would be if we don't miss any more days of school for weather, whether it's severe weather from spring weather, or whether it's winter weather, that we really look at that last week of school. Ms. Patron talked about our attendance rates and how that impacts our accreditation and so forth. We know historically, the last couple of days of school, there are no, there are no half a week is not attended as well. So I'd ask you to, to think of it, we don't need a decision on this tonight, or any of this tonight. But one thing I would like to consider, we'll be looking at that week of June 5th through the 8th. Currently, the last day of school for students is June 8th, with a teacher workday on June 9th. We discussed this a few, a little bit as a staff, and like to consider the last day of school being June 2nd, and then teacher workdays at Monday and Tuesday, and call it, that would still have us at 18 days, 17 days above our 990 hours, given the fact we haven't missed any days of school. And we finished all our SOL testing by that time, so it will not impact SOL testing or that level of instruction. It's something to consider, but I think it would, with everything that's been going on this year, and the amount of stress we've put on some of our staff, I think that would be something that we'd like for you to think about as a, as a board. And what helps for summer school teachers too, that gives them a break between then and summer school starting. So this, again, it's just something to consider. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have regarding that.
Board, question? Ms. Justice?
Dr. Wells, one of the things that had been raised earlier in the year was the idea that teachers had to turn in their grades before the end of school, and then you had students that weren't showing up because their grades were done. So this might help avoid that?
Well, regardless, grades will be due the last day of school, wherever the last day of school is. So-
So we made that change anyway?
I, I made that decision.
Thank you.
So that was a, that was a Dr. Wells decision.
Thank you.
Because I know, being another situation. However, looking at the big impact, it still comes down, you know, on a partial week, SOLs are finished, it just makes it, so, anyway. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if you needed a consensus with the board, or you actually needed a motion?
Since it is changing the academic calendar, I would need a motion to approve any of those changes that we're making. And I believe that would be what we need, because it is, you voted on, you approved the calendar by votes, I think we'd need to have a vote by the board to change the calendar.
Do you need a motion for each one, or do you need us to just state?
It depends on how you, if you feel comfortable with all we've stated. Now, I will say this, regarding those last four, three or four days of school, if we have weather-
That goes away.
That goes away. That would, that'd be off the table. If we get, if I have to, if, God forbid, something happened like the Elan tornado again, we have to close school for three or four, you know, for a week, then that will be off the table. We would make those days up. But if we don't miss any days of school, that's where I like it.
So would you like us to approve everything except for that week for now? Or is that, or do we have to come back if we have weather and we've already removed those days? Have we got to make a motion to put those days back on?
I think you could, I think you could say it as, you're, you could say right now that contingent upon not missing-
Okay.
Days for, then we would do that, if that's, if that's the desire of the board.
They can be changed to inclement weather makeup days, which we've had in the past. Those end days.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, one of my, my thoughts is about the end of the, the school, is if we say it's dependent on not missing any more days, I know that is contingency, but if teachers go ahead and make, or parents, and make plans-
Yes, ma'am.
Then it gets reversed. It's going to be really a hardship where they're just not going to show up. So for me, I think it would be prudent that we approve the April 17th and the graduation date, and maybe push the other one off just a little bit to, to get a better feel.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's just, I understand what you're saying, making it contingent, but, you know.
Why don't we look at April 4th as our, as our board meeting in April?
And April 6th.
April 6th for the board meeting in April. If, that's three weeks away. If we don't get any weather between now and then, I anticipate us not having any, we won't get snow. Now, Houston, we all could have severe thunderstorm, but, you know, we could make a decision, you could do the other one then, if that's your desire. I just don't want to wait. If we're going to do something, I want to give people enough reaction time to adjust schedules, if that's, if that's, if we're going to make a change.
Okay.
Do you think waiting till next month would be?
I think I can give them a heads up that it could be happening, and go ahead and put a contingency plan in place at the school. So if it, if we, if we do change that to June 2nd being the last day of school for students, that they could have a plan in place to accommodate that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Dr. Wells, opportunity, it sounds like, is happening right now. I think maybe floating around the fact that we were, because of the weather, or lack of weather, we had these extra days. And maybe next year, if the attendance is better, we could erase some more of those days.
Well, yeah, we're based on-
I know we can't move the days from one year to the next. However, it does give you an opportunity to say, "Hey, next year, if we have this many days left over, it's a possibility based on attendance."
Yes, sir.
You know, maybe more days could be-
It is important to remember, next year, we do end earlier. With the, with the adopted calendar, we were able to end at the end of May and not go into June next year, so-
Right.
And that might push the SOL window on graduation a little bit, so it may not be as available, is all I'm saying.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
How does this affect teacher contract days? I mean, they have like 200-day contract?
Jim?
Yeah, they do have 200-day contracts, and typically they do have roughly six discretionary days. What? No, it's roughly six, maybe seven in this count, I could look back at that pretty quickly and tell you, which are days that they work above and beyond the contract for all the different activities that they perform in. So already, they're working about 193 days of that 200-day contract. This, this would, if you remember, two of those days would still be teacher workdays, so there would be three days at the end of the year that would be basically lifted off of their 193-day contract at this point, and not needing to be worked. So yes, that is, that is something that will be given, and, you know, for those that have been working tirelessly beyond their contract, beyond their, their regular school day throughout the year, I'm sure that would be much appreciated, as would the day after spring break. Of course, the other one was converted to teacher workday for graduation, so that would have no impact. So looking at a total of four days beyond, and if you count the discretionary days, because that really is work, right? So it is a 200-day contract. You're talking about actual physical attendance is 193.
But I don't believe they count for their discretionary days, do they?
They wa, so when they have those discretionary days in, it's because they're actually working, they're, they're expected to be at meetings, after-school activities, all these different things. That actually is work, it's a discretionary day, doesn't mean you're, you're freeing off. I mean, they're accounted for by all the additional time that you put in throughout the course, over the course of the year. And there are many teachers probably put beyond that in.
And this year, there were four built into the calendar.
Oh, four, thank you. And we did reduce that a little bit, yeah, the previous year.
So I guess, I guess what I'm trying to wrap my mind around is if a teacher has used all of their discretionary days, and then they get additional discretionary days versus a teacher who hasn't, is there going to be equity there for our teachers?
Well, discretionary days are based more off of them performing the extra duty. So if they come, the great, the evening events where you have the evening meetings, early morning meetings, that's how we build up the hours for the discretionary days, parent-teacher conferences, the spring flings and those types of things, that's what builds up that hour. So it's not days they don't have to come to work, it's just hours they put in that adds up to those additional days.
Correct.
So the discretionary days are built into their contract of 200 days, is that correct?
Correct.
So in essence, doing this would give them, paying them for three contract days?
Yes, ma'am.
And they don't have to work for it? Okay.
They don't have to report.
That is correct.
But throughout the year, you've been there.
So as we recognize and appreciate and provide those incentives to the teachers for all the hard work, and also help attract others when they see the things that we do to try to support our teachers, I think it would be beneficial in that regard. And beyond the teachers, it does, that is, that does impact others when we're off as well. So that is throughout the employee population.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve the change the superintendent mentioned for April 17th and graduation day, May 26th.
Yes, ma'am.
Second?
Any other discussion, board? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Hearing none?
Thank you. And then we'll continue to monitor, and if the board's discretion, I'll bring it back to you, and then we can kind of look at the, that last week of school. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And-
Chairman?
Yes.
Real quick, earlier, when Dr. Hoden was talking about the buses, you asked about the age of the buses with the motor and transmission. I reached out to Ms. Campbell and I got her response back. The motor was on a 2009 bus, and the transmission was on a 2014 bus, to give you an idea on age.
Ten to 15 years. Okay. And the last thing I had, this was on the letter from, I got, I had from the Amherst County Sports Hall of Fame regarding the policy change. I just think it's something that I'd like for you to consider. We don't need a decision, you know, immediate, but it would require a, a change, or I guess, you don't need to change policy, but you could do a, amend the policy to, or exception to policy to do that, if that was, so what you chose to do. But right now, our policy does state that in order to, a facility, it says, a school or facility, is how it's phrased, that it would require the person to be deceased for 10 years before something can be named after them. Obviously, if they're deceased 10 years, they don't see the benefit of something being named after them. But that was a, that's at the request of the Sports Hall of Fame, so I just want to bring it to your attention, what our policy currently states.
Dr. Wells, have we made other exceptions there?
The only thing I know of is when Dr. Nichols was superintendent, that the area where I, where we built the outdoor classroom, he recognized Mr. Will, and it was named after him. But again, I'm not sure where, what the board did to do that, but I know that's what I was told to name it, so that's what we named it. So I'm not sure if he got permission from the board, you know, I just know that's where we are. But it has been done, yes.
So a facility, structure was named after?
Right. But I think it depends on what you can, is the baseball field a facility?
Gotcha.
Right? Or is it a field? It's not a building. It's, it is a space, yeah. An event space. So I think that'll be, if you have questions about that, I think that might be another conversation to have with Mr. Wright. I know we're going to talk to him tomorrow about some other issues, so maybe we can bring that up with him then.
Okay.
What is the policy number?
It is policy FFA.
That's easier to remember. Strawberries.
Speaking of strawberries-
Yeah, exactly.
They're in the refrigerator.
Oh, really?
Yes, we have them for you.
Didn't even have to break my card.
You didn't, I have them for you. I must forgot. All right, and then the last thing. The session dates for our proposed session, the Google Doc, Google Forms out there. If you would just please take a look at that and go in and fill out the day you feel you can be here. The dates in, in question are March 29th, March 30th, or April 19th, or that, you know, so if you could just go on that Google Form, and Dr. Ms. McNairy is going to send it to you again, so it's at the top of your inbox, and then you can, so it's not lost. And then you can go ahead and please let us know what date works for you. Okay? And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so moving on now to, we will do 14.01 and 15.01 together, if we could. So, Mr. Arashi, would you start us off, please?
Yeah, sure. We didn't have any, a meeting this month, the STEM Committee. Tonight, we heard a lot. I'm glad the public is getting engaged, and we heard a lot of commentary. I think the board's decision to review the policy and define the policy is, making sure that we get it right is, is very important. I know when the policy was initially passed, the state sends us stuff that we have to Sometimes there's not enough time to really dig into the meat of it and get all the input we need. Other times, it's, we have enough time. This policy seems to have touched on a lot of things, and I'm glad that the conversation happened, and will continue to happen, and will move forward to make the right decisions for our school, and to move every child every day in the right direction. You know, it's, you know, something we had in our retreat, and we talked about, you know, what our goal is, you know, as division, as, as the school board, and it's, it still stands as every child every day. So I think we take time to reflect on that. Anytime a policy comes up is, will this benefit every child every day? Before that decision is made, I think we'll always go in the right direction. I think that's, that's something that's, shouldn't bend, shouldn't yield. It should benefit every child every day. And if it can't do that, then maybe we need to rethink what we're doing. I mean, we've got a lot of work to do ahead of us coming out of the pandemic. I see, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned with middle schools right now. The data's showing we're, we're struggling there, but we're not going in the wrong direction. We're still moving forward, and we're going to continue to run over hurdles and move our, move our division forward, move our schools forward, support our teachers, and keep our students moving in the right direction. I'm excited to hear about new construction. However, I, I think maybe instead of just the old straight square pattern, maybe we can angle that building, but we'll have that discussion later. We'll, we'll look at some architect and curb appeal for that building. But yeah, that's a conversation for another night. But there's a lot of, a lot of data thrown at us, and it's good to see that, and that growth in the right direction. Your team put together a great presentation, that's, that's, that's good stuff. And I think that's about it. Our students are, now we're getting excited. Prom's coming up. What's going on over there? Yeah, wake up, yeah. I think maybe we ought to move the student portion of the meeting earlier. I, I mean, they, they do have finals coming up, there's, there's a lot of studying, maybe some dance moves they got to pick up before prom, but it's exciting to hear from you and, and all the things. You're going to be giving a tour at the college. All right, all right, good looking out for everybody. I like that. Good stuff. And I think that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Justice, please.
All right, thank you, sir. So, the, I'm, we met at the governor's school this month to discuss budget. There was a lot of good conversation and some innovative thinking on how to perhaps reduce some expenses and increase some flexibility. So I really enjoyed that. Tonight, I really appreciated, as usual, all the community involvement representing a broad spectrum of concerns. I am so thankful for everyone that showed up. A particular interest to me is the Hall of Fame request to amend the policy so that buildings or fields could be named for those still living. Sounds like we're adding that to the agenda possibly for next, in April. Greatly appreciated the suggestion from Dr. Wells and Dr. Norman to make IIa clearer and more user-friendly, as, as far as reading it and understanding. And I really appreciated all the examples you put out there of how it could impact our teachers and how we could make that, do what we wanted to do as a board. Having heard from our bus drivers throughout the past year, I'm really excited that instead of having to wait until August for a new bus, due to Mr. Roke's ingenuity and your team, to instead have a new bus in a week, I believe. Is that correct? Dr. Hoden, thank you. That is definitely a silver lining to the saying goodbye of an old bus. Our student representatives were a highlight, as always. Having a high school senior in my home, prom and graduation are high on our radar for spring excitement. Community, community, what a delight it is to live in such a close-knit area. I have enjoyed the community events Dr. Wells has promoted and been able to attend. My kids, whenever I say, "Oh, I have to go to a board meeting," they're like, "Are we going to play football? Can we eat, have hamburgers?" I'm like, "Ah, not yet." And they're like, "When?" And I'm like, "Ah, I don't know." So it's, you know, everywhere I go, you can see people acclimating back to being knit together, and you can see hope. And for our parents that are scared to send their kids back to school, I really hope that they're able to continue in this healing journey of recovery after a really traumatic season. Finally, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest the formation of a standing library committee. Surrounding area divisions have or set up, that maybe that discussion could be added to our April meeting. Different, like Shenandoah and Bedford and even Campbell, some of them, what they've done is, anyways, I'm suggesting that for our April meeting.
Talk about it, yep.
All right, thanks. And finally, I love reading, and I'm really looking forward to reading across America, and I'm going to try to get into one of those schools to read out loud. Thank you.
Ms. Berg?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say a special thank you to GLAD for everything they do in supporting not only our community, but our schools, and well-deserved resolution for them this evening. Also, it's always great hearing from our community members and what they have to say, and looking forward to working on improving and clarifying our opt-in policy for the community so they could comprehend exactly what it is we had meant for it to say and be more clear for everybody to understand. I think it, a lot of people took it the- I think it, a lot of people took it the wrong way and didn't understand what we were trying to get at. Also, thank you to Dr. Hogan for keeping our buses on the road and scavenging parts and putting them together.
Yes, I mean, that's the mechanics of doing all that.
Okay. Well, thank you for telling us about it. Also, thank you to Dr. Norman for putting that presentation together with all that data tonight. That was really helpful. I really appreciated it and I'll be looking over it again when I get home. Thank you to our student reps. It's always great hearing from you guys and again, you should get into radio. Your voice is just great. He's got that cool, smooth radio voice all the time. Thank you to our teachers, our staff and our administration for moving us in the right direction with the Department of Education. You know, we're going the right direction, going to have improvement and get back on the right track. And also thank you to all our librarians and our library committee for everything they're doing right now, doing the reviews. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Ms. Ligon?
Well, I think we've had a good night. We've had a lot of conversation and I too thank all the community people that come out to share their thoughts. It helps us to make decisions. We've been busy all week. The community breakfast was a success. We went to Mecklenburg one night.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, things going around in a circle. And we enjoyed their presentation of their CTE program down there and it's always good to see what other people are doing. So I, I think we've just been having a good time. Thank you, Dr. Norman, again for the extraordinary amount of data. I'm still concerned with the subgroups. I've been saying that now for 24 years, so I don't know what we're going to do, but I did hear you say that there's some activity there to, or maybe Doc, Mr. Neighbors said it. You do really have to pull people out individually or cohortly or something to kind of raise that a little bit. And then I was listening to the science, where we are with science, and I've heard this before, and I picked out something that some years ago, we experienced an issue with science, the numbers being down because we had a sub. I remember being at the table on that conversation and I said, we hope that doesn't happen again. Now, we can't do anything always about not having a teacher in place and we're doing the best we can, so geez, not about you. But I'm saying that when we bring that into the conversation though, that the numbers are reflecting not having a teacher or not having a staple teacher. We try to keep that, try not to have that happen too much. I'm not sure what's going on with science, not because of that, but I've been hearing this whole science thing now for a few years. You just not hear anything negative about science. So I don't know if we need to have more experiments, blow things up to get people's attention, you know? I don't know. Just do, you know, got to do something to get everybody interested in science again, because that used to not be on the radar. Now, nobody, we're just not doing well in science. Our math and reading, we've always did this with that, but I do thank you for the growth though. You know, I'm not saying negative to everything. I love growth, but I, but I am seeing some subgroups are remaining the same and I would like to see what we can do about that. And then my last thing was, thank everybody, all of your central office staff for everything they're doing and DOE, great report. And Dr. Wells, now you've become a, a real community activist out there yourself. You, I don't know what you're going to come up with next. You know, we've had picnics and we've had dinners and we've had community breakfast. So I'm waiting to see what you're going to do in the summertime. Maybe we'll go have some swimming resort thing going on, I don't know. But I said that to say this, we thank you for all that. That's it. I, I don't, we, and Lowell has not met, so I didn't have a committee committee one. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Well, it seems like everybody has said it all. I do want to take time to thank GLAD and all the companies that support our schools, but I know that GLAD continues to rise to the top in quite a few different areas when we have a need and their partnership and everyone's partnership in our community is welcome and, and needed. So thank you. And I appreciate you very much for the community breakfast. I think it was a great idea. The fact that 60 people came, I think that shows the interest and the support that we do have in our community. And I apologize that I was not be, able to be there as well as other events this week. I also want to thank you for the budget and your staff. It was a very, to me, a very good budget, a budget of need, but you worked with folks here as well as in the county and made that a smooth transition for us as a board and made our, our life easy. So thank you for that. I think our students will do well with that budget. I also want to thank you for the insight of including Elin on the CIP list and hopefully be able to look at some grant funding for that. They've been busting at the seams for a while and making do without classrooms. So I think, I think that will help them feel better. I think that will help them be even better at what they do. And I just want to say the data that was presented tonight, in the midst of all of the different benchmarks and hoops you have to jump through, you were able to make it clear, help us see how we were doing in different areas and like you, there's areas of concern, but the fact that we are moving and we are, I mean, I've seen you guys do your magic before, so I know that you will continue to do that and I just appreciate it. But I know behind those graphs, it's the collection of the data, it's the administering of the test, it's the teaching of the students, it's pulling those small groups together, it's the after-school work. It, it is an insurmountable amount of work from teachers, administrators, students and parents and, and you guys. So it's not just a number on that screen. I know what's behind it, so I just want to say thank you to everybody. And I had forgotten about the discrepancy between graduation and accreditation and I'm glad you mentioned that because I, I've been real concerned about math at the high school. Now I know why. So it doesn't necessarily reflect our teaching, it reflects the discrepancy there. So anything that we can do to help build that back, I mean, someone pulls the rug out from under you, we need to put that rug back under there somehow. So just want to say thank you and Fatima and Evan, thank you for being patient and dealing with us tonight. It's always good to see your smiling faces, even though I know you're tired because your day starts early. For what someone suggested, maybe we need to bump you up a little bit so you can slip out towards the end, but thank you for being here and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So I, I'd like to start off with just reminding the community, recently there was a young 12-year-old daughter, 12-year-old girl who was shot in Lynchburg. She was a student of Lynchburg City Schools, but she was a student of Amherst County Schools before she was in Lynchburg. So you know, our thoughts and prayers go out to their family, her teachers, her previous classmates. So I'd like everybody to keep those families in your prayers. I'd also like to reiterate, you know, thanks for GLAD and Clorox, or GLAD, Clorox, wherever they are now, that, you know, for all that they do. They, I mean, it's, it's great to have a company that's of that size, that close, making that much of a difference. So it's great to see that kind of support. And thanks for the people who came to speak tonight. We do plan to readdress the policy, get some, I'll say, better information out. There will be a survey for community input. We ask the community to show up and take the survey, tell us what you think. And when it comes to, speaking of community, when we hired Dr. Wells, we put out a survey asking people, one of the things that they wanted to see in a superintendent, and one of the biggest things we got is we wanted somebody who would unite the schools with the community. And I think a lot of these breakfasts, the tailgates, the things that we've had going on, they definitely do that. It's, it's part of showing up Amherst. So they show up for us, we need to show up for them. So and we, you know, we, we tell them to come to our stuff, we got to go out to theirs too. So we just, we just remind people of that. But part of that also is making sure your kids show up at school. I don't think we'll say that enough. Ms. Patron, if I say it too much, just let me know. Okay? Okay? But and, and you know, there, there was a, there was a question earlier tonight about, you know, what time we have our meetings. I know I can speak for myself. A lot of times I leave work, come straight here and, you know, eat dinner at 10 o'clock at night. So I, I wish we could have a maybe more convenient time, but I don't really know when that would be. So the, I'm looking forward to the musical. If you've never been to any of the musicals or the plays or whatever they put on, you have definitely missed out. They are, they're always, you'll never walk away and go, Darren, that was no good. They're always great. So I look forward to coming to the high school and seeing those. And if you're any kind of sports fanatic, there's always a sporting event going on. So please come out and see them, support them all. And I, I hope we can work out something for the baseball field. I think it's, I think it would be greatly appreciated and so. And with that, I really hope we can do something with, with, with Elin. They've had, they've been busting at the seams for quite a while and it would be great to, to see that come to fruition. So with that, that's about all I've got. So thank you guys for everything. Next. Anyone? I need a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second?
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.